I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you all will rise and we'll further pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodell, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
And Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Thank you.
And we're going to have a business action first on 3.01, and that will be the appointment of the MEH principal. If you want to have any remarks first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, good evening. It is a pleasure this evening to welcome Valerie Hardy to Falls Church City Public Schools as our selected appointment for the principalship at Mary Ellen Henderson. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Hardy for a number of years in Fairfax County and in a number of capacities, and on her own merits, she has firmly placed herself the first among equals, for sure. She most recently comes to us as an assistant principal at Daniel's Run Elementary School. Prior to that, she was an assistant principal at Crestwood Elementary School with Mr. Tim Kasich, who actually happens to be here, whose son is a son, is a rising seventh grader.
Right, daughter.
Oh, sorry, daughter, Mary Ellen Henderson. And prior to that was the director of student services at Kilmer Middle School, and before that was a lead counselor at Kilmer, and before that was a special education middle school teacher. But in her 17 years of experience, 12 of those years are at the middle school level. So she comes with a really broad leadership base. When she took the two assistant principal positions at the elementary school, part of it was to round out her experiences and prepare her for whatever the next experience for her was going to be. And we are very proud to have her join our schools here in the city. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair.
And we're going to give you an opportunity to speak right after we do the formal. So if someone would make a motion, please.
Sorry, still can't get on.
I can't either. My computer's frozen.
I'm not connected to you.
What's the deal?
All right. Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve the appointment of Valerie Hardy, principal of Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, effective July 10, 2017.
Just a second. Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Ms. Goodell?
Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. The floor is yours for any remarks you want to make.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it is thank you. I'm so excited and honored to be joining such an amazing school system with such strong principles around student leadership, student growth and development, and focusing on creating critical and creative problem solvers who are going to do great things in this world. So I could not be more thrilled to have an opportunity to work in a neighborhood school. That's important to me. That's a value that I hold, working in tandem with the community to make sure we're providing the appropriate supports for students. And I had the opportunity to meet the staff, and wow, what an amazing group of educators. So I look forward to leading alongside them, learning with them, and I know together we're just going to do great things at Mary Ellen Henderson. So thank you, and I look forward to many years to come with great successes to share with you all.
Valerie, we definitely want to welcome you to the Falls Church City family. You're coming into a great school, and we look forward to your leadership there to continue the great work that has been going on for a number of years there. And we know that with your experience that you're going to be bringing a lot of new and exciting ideas and ways to continue the growth that we've seen at Mary Ellen. Thank you. Any other comments or anyone?
Yeah, here.
Yes.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with school board by law 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statement may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record request. Is there any progress? Okay. All right, we will move on to 5.01, discussion of the board regarding upcoming work session topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, I don't think is going to be a very long agenda item, but I wanted to discuss an idea perhaps with all of you to see if it was something that maybe you would want to build in to your future meetings. As we try to think about what our meetings look like, both regular meetings and work sessions, and try to, in many ways, I think, develop some discipline around what those look like, oftentimes there's a question about whether or not topics should go on to work sessions or not work sessions, at least in my experience. So in a former district that I worked with, we had what was called a forum. And a forum was typically done prior to a regular school board meeting. In my previous district, it lasted sometimes up to 45 minutes or an hour. The issues were remarkably different, I think, in terms of scope than perhaps what you all may be experiencing here. But the idea behind the forum was an opportunity to come and talk with your colleagues within that forum to say, you know, here are some things that I'm hearing in the community, or here are some things that I have some questions about. Does it rise to the level of a work session need? Do we need a work session on it or not? And if not, then it would be kicked back perhaps to the superintendent and staff for some response. However, if it was something that rose to the level of work session, then you all via consensus at the forum would make the decision, you know what, this needs to go on a work session. So then we would take it back and develop a work session topic around whatever it was that you came out of that forum with. It's an open meeting and an opportunity, I think, more than anything, just to sort of gain some consensus around ultimately what does end up on the work session agenda. We, as a staff, have some standing items that we're just going to have to do throughout the process anyway, whether it's budget, or hiring, or curriculum updates and the like. But this forum would be something that would be more driven by perhaps the school board and as things begin to rise. So I'm sort of sending that out to you as a thought to see if there was some sense of wanting to try that, and if you did want to try it, we could perhaps try it at our next regular board meeting and start 15 minutes early at 6:45. And so for 15 minutes, we could come and we just could kind of sit and have an open conversation about things that you feel like may need a work session or may not. Let me stop there and sort of get some reaction from you and see if that's something that is of interest.
Any comments, feedback? Mr. Castillo?
Thank you for those thoughts, Dr. Noonan. I guess I have a couple of things that I went to a presentation by a man named Phil Gore about how school boards can make a positive impact on their districts. And one of the things he talked about was not just the front end, but on the back end, having a sort of after-action review of, was this meeting a good one, and did it align with our agenda and our strategic plan? I think one of the questions that your proposal, I think, implicitly asks is, you know, what are the issues that we should be talking about as a board? And I think some of that ties to our goals, and I think some of that ties to student achievement, which I think is the touchstone of everything we do. So I think that would be a good thing to try, but I would suggest also that if we are, as I hope, having a board retreat and as we are revisiting our strategy, that we bake into our going-forward process what it is we should be meeting about and talking about based on that plan. And if it doesn't touch the plan or the strategy, I would respectfully defer to you on 99% of the issues. Maybe personnel is obviously an exception. So I think those two things, aligning to our plan and also maybe doing an evaluation of how we are working as a board at the end of our meetings, those two things could dovetail to more effective meetings.
Ms. Gill?
I like the idea. I think it's an efficient way to talk through some issues. You know, before, we have at the end of our meeting, future agenda items. It's a nice way to kind of shake things out at the beginning of the meeting instead of waiting until the end. The public is more likely to be there to hear maybe that their concerns are being heard by us. A lot of people don't stick around till the end of the meeting to hear the future agenda items. They don't know that we're saying, oh, we're going to discuss this someday. That way they'll hear it right away that we are going to raise, we're going to talk about the issues they've been raising. And I like the idea that you then make the decision, is this a school board issue that we're going to talk about, or is this a staff issue? And it eliminates some of that emailing back and forth as well and problems we, you know, we can't have these discussions over email. So to have that 15 minutes is a nice way to have a discussion.
Chair.
Yes.
Just respectfully, I would say that that would be your decision.
Okay, sorry.
About whether or not you want to carry it forward to a work session.
Okay.
I would be part of the conversation, but ultimately, I think it would be consensus of the board to say, you know what, this perhaps does meet one of the pillars of the triennial plan that we have, and since we have this triennial plan, it meets this need. So let's maybe carry that one forward.
All right.
But I certainly would be there to perhaps nudge you a little, to say yes or no.
Any other comment? Ms. Lawrence?
And your idea is, this is just things that we would bring up at the time, not ahead of time. And the reason I'm asking is the last thing I want to do is make it sound like us talking to each other then becomes an additional burden on staff, where a meeting starts even earlier and they've got more to prepare, because I think we've sometimes forgotten that, you know, if we have an idea, that may represent, you know, five hours of staff time for a 10-minute discussion.
I think that that's a really great point. The expectation would be that there wouldn't be any preparation by the staff or by the board leading up to the forum. And I think that that's part of the conversation also, is that this topic that has come up, you know, we can work through that, but it's going to take eight hours of staff time to do it. Is it worth the eight hours of staff time to do this work or not? And if it is, then we'll go forward with it, and if not, then perhaps we can find a different way to navigate through whatever the issue is.
Okay, I think that's the one thing I feel like we've been missing, because we will come up with ideas for future agenda items, future work session items, but we don't get, okay, yes, we can do that, but it will take this much time, and it'll take the time of, you know, Trish, who's also working on personnel policies and things like that. So I feel like we've come up with ideas that are great in a vacuum that just put extra burden on staff when, if you were to say, it's going to take eight hours of staff time over the next 10 days if you really want to get to it. We could easily get to it in three weeks. I think we'd look at it differently. Thank you.
To Mr. Castillo's point, one of the, again, in my most previously prior district, we did what was called a debrief at the end of all of our meetings, just to sort of ask the questions. What worked? What didn't work? Did we follow our governance plan and the like? I don't know that necessarily now is the time to implement that, as we haven't had our opportunity to talk about governance and have that opportunity through a retreat. So that may be something that we could look at down the line. And it was very useful as a way to wrap up our school board, our regular school board meetings. We didn't typically do that after work sessions, but just something to think about.
Any other comments? Yeah, I think it's a good something for us to do, kind of get into the practice of having opportunities to talk things out, and then if the consensus is there, you know, bring it on to a work session. But I agree with John, as long as we know, as we're talking about it, that the amount of staff time that may entail, may adjust, or be flexible with when the actual topic may come up. So.
And just one last thing for the good of the order, and I just want to, from a governance perspective, make sure that we sort of are thinking in the same path, that a forum topic that's approved to go from the forum to the work session then goes to the work session and perhaps could then go on to a regular meeting. Not always, it might just be an informational work session, but things just wouldn't show up on the regular meeting if they hadn't been to a work session previously, because I want to give you an opportunity to ask questions, to sort of dig through the issues, and then have that two-week window or week window to ask more questions of the staff and of myself. So I think that's the way things operate, but I just want to be clear.
Sorry, just one other question.
Ms. Lawrence?
This would be something where we would all know and agree, it's going to end at seven, so we can start our regular meeting. Because in the past, we would do work sessions on the front end, where, you know, we'd meet at, what, 6:15, 6:30? And we always ended up making people late because we kept talking too long, and then the seven o'clock meeting started at 7:20, 7:30, 7:45, and people were milling around outside. I would just like to make sure that we all know.
Yeah, I think we're, but it's going to be a hard stop, so that we can't keep the meeting on schedule for ourselves as well as the public who's going to be coming for the meetings as well.
Yeah, I mean, we're there anyway. We're staying till the end, so it's more the public who sort of suffers when we keep talking.
And it wasn't unusual for us to say, the forum agenda's way too thick. What can be kicked to our next meeting? And we would modify that way as well.
Yep. All right, we're going to move on to 6.01, FY '17 year and budget projections.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight I have the great honor and privilege to introduce formally, I suppose, for the first time, Deirdre McLaughlin. Deirdre comes to us most recently as a retiree from Arlington Public Schools, and prior to that, served as the chief financial officer in Fairfax County Public Schools. She is acting currently as the interim assistant superintendent for finance and operations, and we're very pleased to have you. We have sort of been laughing a little bit, not too hard, but we both came to this position at an interesting time of the year, towards the end. Her more interesting than mine, at least I've had six weeks to sort of lead up to the end of the school year. But as Deirdre arrives, she's been tasked with sort of looking at year-end balance and trying to figure out, where are we? Where do we need to go from here, and how do we begin to plan for the future budgetarily? So I did invite her tonight to talk a little bit about year-end. It's not the most complex topic that we're going to share with you tonight, but we will share more in the future. But more than anything, wanted to give Deirdre an opportunity to share a little bit of information with you and you to get to know her. So with that, I turn it over to Deirdre.
Thank you for that very kind introduction. And you're right, this was a challenging time to come to any school division. I, in my view, finance offices do two things that are kind of critical, and one is the budget, and everybody knows that. But year-end is, it is so important on a number of fronts. I mean, it is important because it's a time to measure, did you do what you said you were going to do? And very importantly, are you ending the year in a financial position that will facilitate beginning the next year, which happens very quickly? So when Dr. Noonan asked me to do this, I sort of thought, well, I don't know how much sense it makes to do a year-end presentation when we're not at year-end. But, so I'm going to give you sort of a little bit of a highlight of what's going on at the moment. So just at a very high level, when I got here, I was a little hyper about the time of year. And so we've spent a lot of time, and the staff here has been so terrific, getting all the data and the information and looking at where we are. And there's still many, many moving parts. I don't have a number for you tonight, but I do feel very comfortable that the school division is going to end in a good position. So that is a good thing. So here's what we're doing. We are closing the books. You've got three funds. The operating fund, by far the more important, but all three are combined what you look at in many respects. Each one has to come in at a, in a positive, good position. As you know, the activity in finance continues. We're still making payrolls, we're paying bills, we're cleaning up. A lot is going on. What will really end this year is going to be the audit. The auditors have been in, they've done all their preliminary fieldwork, and they will be back again in September, and presumably they will wrap up the audit sometime in September, perhaps October. And I believe last year you got the audit report in December. But we will have updates on what's happened here in the interim. So here's what we're doing. You know, we have a number of employees, teachers in particular, 10- and 12-month staff that have elected to be paid over 12 months rather than over the 10 or 11 months they work. So what will happen is, in July and August, we're going to be, we're going to be making payrolls and payments to people that charge back to this current fiscal year. So that needs to be accounted for in your year-end calculations. Hourly staff are paid in arrears, so people who've worked at the end of June will be paid in the middle of July. So that has to be calculated and brought back. People leave the system, and they have leave payouts. That will happen after the year ends, but needs to be charged to this year. We have commitments. And when you know you're going to spend some money, you do a PO and you encumber it. And so you've set it aside for a particular purpose. Things change. You know, the amount of the purchase may change. You may decide you're going to do half of it, you may start it, it's not working, you want to do something else. In any event, you have to go through all of these commitments or encumbrances to say which ones really are not needed, which ones can be liquidated, and with the balances returned to the ending balance. And then you have state payments. They come in very late. As a matter of fact, the sales tax, we're estimating the last three months at the moment. So that will all have to come in over the summer and be charged back. So there's a lot going on, a lot going on. So here's what I think we can say with a lot of confidence. We've done a lot of work, a lot of estimating, and I'm very confident that this school division is going to end the year pretty much where you expected to all year. You've gotten quarterly reports, and I would say, I could give you a number, but I know it's wrong. I mean, I have no idea what the real final number is. So if you're going to look at an estimate, the best estimate is your last one, which was third quarter, and that was ending the year with approximately $150,000 that would go into your ending balance. It will be different than third quarter. I mean, there's no doubt about it. In summary, we have year-end activities going on. They're all on track. I feel we're going to be where we need to be at the end of the year. And while I'm not giving you very detailed information, I hope I'm giving you some comfort that we're doing what we need to do. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Well, I'm happy to try.
My questions, anyone? Mr. Castillo?
Ms. McLaughlin, is there anything that you need that you don't have to be doing what you need to do and getting up to speed?
I need to be more skilled with your financial system, but that is something that, you know, that's not something that you can do. There is great staff here, and I really feel that we are going to, and one of the things we're doing is we are meeting to figure out who's doing what and who can do different things. So we're having discussions. If we shift some things around, I think we can create some capacity that we haven't tapped into. So at the moment, I think we're going to be good. I really do. And if something changes, I will be at Dr. Noonan's door in a minute.
Keep us posted. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Lawrence?
You know, everything you said makes complete sense, and, you know, it's not even June 30th yet. I guess the real question is, you don't have the numbers now. Audit, you know, auditors come back in September, we get the audit in December, but when will you be back to, you know, tell us how we did at the end of the year?
I think that by the, probably September is really realistically. I think there can be, there can be updates like this one, where we can say to you, we've gotten, we're through July or midway through July, and this is where we are. The farther we get through the summer, obviously, the closer it's going to be. They don't close the books until after the auditors are finished, which is, it's just the accounting method that the city uses, and others. Other counties do the same. But it just doesn't close until you've gotten all of your financial activity completed. But it can be certainly updated.
Okay, but nothing will not be able to get done that needs to get done while we're waiting for the auditors.
Oh, no, no, no.
Right.
We're going to open up '18, and just, we're already processing things for '18, FY '18. So no, everything's happening and moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. McLaughlin, welcome to Falls Church as well. Tonight has been a night of welcomes to new folks who are helping us continue to move things forward, and we look forward to working with you during your tenure while you're here.
It's been a very, very good experience.
Yeah. Thank you. Next will be summer in the city, summer school, and summer daycare update.
Catchy, right? Summer in the city? Stolen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had an opportunity to talk a little bit, Ms. Hi and I, about some of the things that are happening with respect to summer school and summer daycare, and I've asked that she come and give you all an update of what's happening in our schools this summer, because you may get questions, and people may ask you, and it'd be good to have that information. So, Ms. Hi.
We will be beginning summer school or summer academy and summer in the city, as Dr. Noonan has said, next week, starting at Jesse Thackeray. It's going to be a four-week program at Jesse Thackeray, at Mount Daniel, and at Thomas Jefferson. At Jesse Thackeray, we start on July 10 through August 3, and there we're serving our students with disabilities, our English language learners, and other students who need additional support. The focus will be on maintaining school readiness, early literacy, and math skills. Students will be engaged in various STEAM activities. We will have about 39 students who will be participating, and we're breaking the students up into three classes to make sure we keep the classes pretty small. At Mount Daniel, as you know, we won't be at Mount Daniel, we will be serving those students at Thomas Jefferson this summer. And again, that program will run July 10 through August 3, so we will have Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel students riding the same bus, which will help with, save on transportation. At Mount Daniel, we will have approximately 47 students attending, and this will be kindergarten and first grade students. They will be doing a program that we call RICQ that many school divisions, surrounding school divisions use, which is called Reading Intensive Care Unit. It's really a framework that's designed to increase students' reading skills and to develop literacy skills, doing word work and writing, as well as we're using Lucy Calkins writing with, which the students really build skills and increase some STEAM activities with that. We plan to do some field trips with our Mount Daniel students, as well as some enrichment opportunities during week four of that program. At Thomas Jefferson, they've really worked hard to create some more problem-based activities this year. They will do two, it's a four-hour day for Thomas Jefferson. They'll spend two hours doing some more literacy-based, and then the second two hours, they're doing enrichment, and they're anchoring theirs into student-friendly, teacher-selected themes such as the Amazing Race, where they'll learn about four different cultures throughout the four-week period. They're doing the Earth is Ground for Survival, where they'll be learning about student activities and garden planting around student urgency for protecting the planet. They'll also do some history lessons on the United States from the 1800s to the present, as well as learning about American history and famous figures. And we will have around 40 to 50 students, and that will be grades two through four. Our fifth graders will be going to Mary Ellen Henderson this summer, where they will be learning about careers and doing some project-based lessons where they will be learning about careers and doing STEAM activities. They'll deal with the different 16 clusters. Our students will also have an opportunity for our eighth graders to visit the Arlington Career Center this summer, which a lot of times the students really enjoy. Each week they will learn about a different project-based learning. And then at the end of the summer, they actually have a career fair, where they have chosen a career that they like to highlight, and they do a career fair where they invite parents and school officials, school board members, to come and hear them talk about the career that they are thinking about focusing on when they go off to high school, or as they focus on as they continue their career in even middle school and moving forward. And then at George Mason, they've actually, and Mary Ellen, let me stop back, go back a little bit. Mary Ellen Henderson actually will start their program July 5. They're starting a little bit earlier to have a little bit more time for those students to explore their careers. And at George Mason, they opened up And at George Mason, they opened up their online classes on June 6th. So they've already started to give the students from June 6th to August 24th to take online courses, which will allow them to actually complete, get one credit course for this whole, for the summer. And those classes are allowing students to get new course credit, course credit recovery, or for enrichment purposes. They're both online, as well as there will be some face-to-face opportunities for students who need the additional classroom setting. Standards of learning exams will be offered for students who need the credit recovery. The High C online courses will be direct instruction and also provide feedback online through conversation through our Schoology program. We have approximately 340 students who will be enrolled on online learning at the high school this summer. And 90 of those are some rollovers from second semester, where they're finishing up some courses. And then, of course, we will have extended ESY at all of our buildings this year. And in terms of daycare, on average, Katie shared with me, there will be 120 children participating in summer daycare grades one through eight. And there are some weeks when there are 249 students who are enrolled. And they will be doing field trips. They'll be swimming trips to the Atlantis Water Park. They're having special visitors come in. There'll be, of course, morning and afternoon snacks. But she's got a lot of creative activities going on for daycare this summer. So it seems like we've got a lot of great things going on in Falls Church. And the students seem to be excited. More updates to come. We'll take a lot of pictures.
Any questions or anything? Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Ms. Hi. Two questions. Anything pertaining specifically to English language learners in the summer?
Every program have invited all of our English language learners to participate, and we have ESOL teachers involved in all of these programs. But we really try to include them in the STEAM-related activities and just honing in on the RICU at our elementary schools. And at the high school, there, the ESOL students are involved in the more traditional classes where they can take the online classes, but the ESOL teachers are there with them to provide additional support as they need it.
Okay. Thank you. And the other question, with respect to the reading ICU?
Our ICU. RICU.
But, yes.
Yes, that thing.
I keep hearing that reading is a skill that not everybody acquires at the same rate. And how do you manage that? I mean, it sounds as if getting people to grade level is a great goal, but if some people acquire reading skills at different rates regardless, how do we manage, how do we deal with that? I mean, it sounds as if there are some students who, they'll start reading at some age, but it's not going to be the same age for some as for others. And just from a larger programmatic perspective, what is our approach to those variations among students?
I mean, we look for different methods. If, you know, materials that we provide aren't working for a specific student, then we look for another method. We look for various Lexile, we look at the different Lexile levels that we can use for students. We look for interest levels. We may look for whether there's, whether it be a computer adaptive program, whether it be a, using a Jan Richardson model. We just look for other types of skill base that we can use for students, to just see if there are other types of reading materials that we can use for students.
And since we're talking reading, any Waterford update?
Right now, it's still in beta. As soon as Mount Daniel can get it for them to use, I'm sure they will try to use it. I actually met with a company today that showed me something that was pretty close to Waterford. So I asked them to send me a, to send me a demo so that I can share it with summer school teachers at Mount Daniel, so they can at least look at it to see if that meets their need for Waterford. But, so we'll see. So hopefully, we can find something that will, because so far, we haven't been able to find something that compares to Waterford.
Well, thank you for all your hard work, and I think our summer programs are really something to be proud of.
We're making, we're making some gains, definitely.
You have the questions?
I agree with Mr. Castillo. We've got a pretty full schedule of things going on for our kids this summer, and we'll look forward to kind of hearing updates as they go on through that. Next, we'll be talking about meeting schedule and back to Dr. Noonan again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your handouts this evening and posted on Board Docs, you'll find the school board budget, or the school board meeting dates for June 17th to September 17th. You can skip the word budget there. And what we have done is, we have included in there through July, August, and September, one regular meeting and one work session meeting. The idea, again, trying to gain a little bit of discipline around meeting two times a month instead of having that third one a month and making sure that we get information to you in a timely fashion and that we're ready to roll. The one thing you won't see in here, unfortunately, is the retreat. We have been unable to find a date that can meet the needs of everybody here. And the dates that we've put out, we've lost at least two people. So it was suggested that perhaps we wait until the January timeframe, when we have some new school board members in to work with those new school board members and the members that are staying, which puts us, puts us at a later point in time. It's just, it's just been too hard to figure out a good Saturday that meets everybody's needs. I don't know how, I don't know how better to handle that than just to say we weren't able to find a date. There are a couple of dates that I would like to share with you tonight at the end, specifically around a public hearing that the City Council is planning to do on the CIP, in addition to a couple of meetings that they're going to be holding with respect to the CIP, that we'd like to have some representation at each of those. But this would be the meeting schedule between now and the end of September. My hope is that between now and the end of September, we can come up with something that's a little more robust in terms of the dates throughout the entire school year and begin populating what some of those work session topics are going to be and what some of those topics that are sort of standing items are for our regular board meetings, so you can begin to predict what's coming and get a chance to see that visually. So for now, this is the schedule between now and September.
Any comments for our superintendent?
You said you had a date for the City Council/CIP meeting?
I do. I have a couple of dates that I was going to put on your radar at the end of the meeting.
And I could wait till then.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Castillo?
Well, I would just say that I would find waiting until January to have a governance retreat to be, I pick an adjective, I guess unacceptable. We have a new superintendent. We have a working relationship we have to develop. And if we don't do it with intention, we'll do it by default, and we'll probably do it a lot worse that way. So, you know, if we can get five of seven, we can get six of seven, but we're going to be working on the triennial plan. I think we all agree our strategic plan needs some work. And if we punt this until January, you know, shame on us. So I would say, take another look at the calendar. I've got one, August 4th is a bad weekend, otherwise I'll be, I'll be here. But we can't do this. I mean, we've had enough lessons with our state of governance that if we, if we do this, then I think that's an abdication of our responsibilities aboard, so.
Other comments?
So I'll step into the fray. I, I agree with Mr. Castillo that a governance retreat would be a valuable thing to do. It would be an exceedingly valuable thing to do. I do think it's difficult to schedule stuff. I know a couple of things went into the idea that this not proceed right now. One is that we were going to use a facilitator, and while I take Mr. Castillo's point quite properly, that, you know, five is better than none, at least, you know, I know both BWP and the prior group, when we used the Virginia, VSBA, excuse me, they actually wouldn't do it unless we had seven members. So it would be an unfacilitated session. I, I also do wonder about the relative efficacy of doing a retreat where, you know, we know that we're going to have a new board on January 1st that will, at a minimum, include at least three new members. So we're going to need to do another governance retreat then. I'm not opposed to doing one this summer. I'm just trying to weigh the question of, for me, I don't know that, it's my opinion that it would be valuable to have a retreat with five members this summer when, you know, that might be a minority of the board in the future. Obviously, there are a lot of things that we have to do, including the strategic plan. But I, that's just my view.
Mr. Enclama?
I was going to say, partly to Phil's point, that I wasn't, I wasn't sure it was more of a governance retreat, it was more of a strategic planning retreat, like things that have to be done, things, other things that we have another chance to tackle. So, and I'm very flexible, so I'm happy to move things around. I mean, I was pretty open for this. And I think it should, it still needs to be done to allow the new administration to sort of get moving. So, yeah, in a sense, I understand where Mr. Castillo is coming from, and I would lean in that direction, but I guess it's summer, it's sort of hard to schedule some, unless we pick maybe a weekday or sometime and be more, you know, we get more radical in our timing. But it would be nice to have it before the year, because the issues won't change. The members and the bodies may change, but I think the issues are still what the issues are. So, anyway, my two cents.
I'd like to add to the fact that we still have to work together for six more months, even those of us who are lame ducks won't be here in January. I think it would be a great idea, and I think it's really necessary that we do have this retreat. So our, the next six months go as well as they could possibly go. That doesn't prohibit the new board from meeting in January for another retreat. And the way I look at it, you can't have too many of those. I think every time you get to meet in that environment and that venue, that it strengthens the board and strengthens the relationship. So I really would like to do a retreat in the, sometime this summer. The sooner the better.
If you, I know the last date that we tried was the 29th, and I believe that's the correct date, that there was not a majority that was available.
Keep looking.
I guess, I guess, keep looking for, maybe for Sundays in there, too, in the mix.
Can I ask a question of the board, if I might, which is, if we have trouble doing it on a weekend, the suggestion was just made, we could do it on a weekday. That might be easier for some, it might be harder for some. Are weekdays in play, or is it just weekends?
I'm, I'm pretty much open, other than teaching summer school in July, and it's only for three weeks. So I'm free until the 5th of July, and I'm free after, from the 28th on, until mid-August.
It depends if it's local or if we have to go someplace. I have a couple of weeks. If it's local, I have a couple of weeks when all three of my kids are in camp, so one of those weeks I can, or I can get a sitter, but as long as it's local, it's fine.
I can, with enough advanced notice, take a day to, if it needs to be a weekday, with notice, I can do that.
Would it be better to do noon to 8:00 at night?
Sleep in, though.
Sleep is good. It's underrated.
For a weekday?
For a weekday? I'm just wondering what's better.
I'd rather do like 8:00 to 2:00 or something, or 9:00 to 2:00, 9:00 to 4:00.
Let us go back, then, Mr. Chair, with your permission, we'll go back and.
Yeah, look at the, look at some potential weekdays and talk with facilitators. Because I would think we need.
And we can go into August if we need to.
Yes.
And I would just pile on here and say, you know, I think we have, this board has to make decisions about things like this. So if this board is committed to having a retreat, then we should make that commitment and follow through on it. I look at this works, the work session planning and the frequency of meetings, and I ask myself how we're going to get through doing, reviewing a strategic plan, if the board wants to do that, if the board wants to develop a work plan or a triennial plan. And indeed, is the board on board with meeting twice a month? I don't recall, maybe, maybe when I was gone, we didn't, we made that decision. I don't know. I'm not aware of that. But, you know, one of the first things we have to do if we're going to be a board is act like a board and make decisions as a board, unless the board doesn't want to do that.
I'm going to agree with that, and that, I want to say, I thought that was the general tradition until the last three, three to four years, that we became almost a weekly meeting. But I thought that was prior time, that the school board was more, at least when I was on City Council, the school board met way less frequently than the City Council did, which I want to say was at least potentially twice, maybe a third time in a month that, so I think that's kind of where this, what Dr. Noonan is talking about, of trying to, making the effort. Granted, I think their flexibility needs to be there, that if we have to go more than two meetings, we have to do that. But I think it's trying to get back to what it used to be, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, you have been on longer than I have, that you, that it may have been more of a, more frequency, but I, to my knowledge, I thought it was at least a twice-a-month type situation for the school board.
Yeah, no, in the past, we had two business meetings a month, and we had a work session. And then in 2014, we changed that because we found that work sessions were actually more useful than the business meetings. So that's why we went to, the business meeting was the first one, and then the other two were work sessions. But, yeah, it was always three times a month. It just, we also tried the odd little, you know, 45-minute work session in advance of the two business meetings, which also didn't work out so well, which was another reason why we went to the two business meetings a month.
Well, and I think we should meet when we should and not when we shouldn't. So, you know, I look at this summer, and I think if we have some of this front-end, front-loaded stuff, maybe a little more, and then maybe there are times where it's a little less. So I don't, believe me, I don't want to meet for the sake of meeting. But I do think we should take an inventory, you know, especially with Dr. Noonan coming on board, the rules of engagement with him, the tone that we want to set with him, a lot of these things, I think, will take some work. So if we, if we can get it done in that time, that's great. But I do think if we don't approach what we do with intention sooner rather than later, we will not only fall back on old bad habits, but create new bad habits.
Well, I personally like the two-meeting-a-month schedule. I feel like, since I've been on school board, I was under the impression we were, we were to meet two, two times a month, possibly three. But once I got on, we were meeting four times a month for marathon meeting times. And to me, it seems like, I don't understand why a small school district like Falls Church City can't just meet twice a month and address the issues that we have. Fairfax County doesn't meet this often, and they're a lot bigger than we are. And so I just, I like this. I think the two meetings a month is a nice rule of thumb, and if something comes up, we have an extra two Tuesdays where we could schedule an additional meeting. But I like what I see right now. My second, Margaret.
My third, Margaret. I would say as well, Mr. Castillo raised the point that we ought to make decisions as a board. I think this is the opportunity to talk about that, in terms of whether we're going to try meeting two sessions a month for the course of the summer. And I think we can do it if we have enough discipline about meetings. We try to walk the walk, as I think Mr. Castillo is urging us to do. Now, it may not be possible, we might need a third meeting a month, but I hope it won't be possible, for much the reasons that Mr. Lawrence said earlier, it's not just our time. When we meet, we draw in a whole bunch of staff, and, you know, when staff is here, they're not with their families, and they're not doing other work that they could be doing. So I think it's a valuable effort to try and do two meetings a month. And if we're going to run that experiment, then during the summer seems to me the time to do it, because we can, we can start to cement our steps in the right way. We build a cadence that will then carry over, I would hope, when the more busy time of September, October, November comes to play. So I'm certainly supportive of the notion of trying to meet twice twice a month during the course of the summer, and I urge any board member who feels it's not a worthy effort to say so, we can have the discussion right now.
I also like to add, though, meeting twice a month frees us up to meet with our liaisons and get, do more school-related events that we normally might not necessarily attend. So, when you have a meeting every Tuesday, and you have, you know, family obligations and work obligations, you're less inclined, at least I am, I'm too tired, to go, to get, to attend things that's important for us to be at, that we wouldn't, like I said, we wouldn't normally necessarily go. So, just had to add that.
Mr., Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah, I would just, in response to what Phil said, I would just, I'd be happy to try this for the summer. We just need to figure out, what do we want to get done for the summer, and how does this schedule let us do it? I mean, that's what it really comes down to, is, it's not a question of, is it two meetings a month versus three? If we can get what we need to get done in one, and then the next time we need three, okay, fine, but what do we want to get done? Don't talk about how many times do we want to meet, because that's kind of meaningless unless you know what you want to accomplish.
And I would say, as my employer calls it, BAU, or Business As Usual, is, I am not against meeting twice a month, and if we don't have to meet twice a month, if we have to meet once a month, that would be great. But, you know, we have three missions, three jobs, policy and strategy, hire a superintendent, and develop a budget. The budget, that's going to come, although we always talk about wanting to do a budget earlier. We just hired a superintendent. We have not had a discussion with the superintendent about how we're going to work with him. I think that's really important. I don't know what the superintendent, you know, Dr. Noonan has been spending time getting familiar with our division. I don't know what his thoughts are about the strategies that we're developing, whether it's adequate, maybe we can punt for a year and stay with what we've got, more or less, or whether he wants to do a big rip and replace and do something much more focused. I don't know, but, you know, in prior years, I think we stick with our strategy and work plan documents, mostly by tweaking them on the margins, and I think some believe, and I, I've come around to this, that we could do a better job on our planning. And if that's the case, maybe we can do that in two meetings a month, but we're certainly going to have to do a lot of work upfront and do our homework and get inputs into Dr. Noonan and to each other, so we can move this thing along expeditiously, so we have a plan in place by the time school starts. So, I think that's doable, but, you know, we're basically in July now, so we're talking about, we have four meetings before school starts. So, you know, if we can get our governance house in order, get our rules of the road with Dr. Noonan in order, and get our strategy and work plan in order in four, in four meetings, then let's do it. But if not, then let's be clear-eyed about that and adjust, because otherwise, what will happen is we'll keep the status quo and make it up as we go along.
Any additional comment?
So, not to, not to talk overly, I, I think I agree with everything Mr. Castillo just said. It is a heavy lift. We're, we're sort of, we're a little bit crosswise with the hiring timeline, because it's great to have Dr. Noonan here for the summer, but it means we're going into June, July, August, are the times we try, as Mr. Castillo said, to get the strategic plan and work plan done for the year, but there's, it's hard to say you had adequate opportunity to go through and figure out all of the changes that you would like to make, or if, whether you want a number of changes. It feels to me like having, as Mr. Castillo said, hired a superintendent and the budget not really coming up again significantly until September, that the policy, policy is the big piece, and we've really got a couple of major lists for the summer. And one, Mr. Castillo mentioned, which is the, the work plan and strategic plan document. The second, I think, is to, is the facilities question, and we're moving at a pace. We've got the resolution on for today, but that's not going to stop. There's the TJ issue, and we've talked about the need to have a, an omnibus facilities plan. If we're going to get this done in four meetings, and I would have said, I was going to raise the strategic plan when we had the, the forum. I thought we were going to have a little bit of a forum tonight, rather than just deciding to have a forum. But I think, you know, the, the, the big issue that we need to get done as quickly as possible is the strategic plan, and I'd suggest that we would want to go in to our next meeting with some proposals from the superintendent, and unfortunately, that's a bit more of a work session discussion, so it, it's difficult to fit in. And we know we, we ran up against last year, the deadline to get the strategic plan done. I, I think it is going to be a tight window to try and get that done. I freely admit that, but I think we can be more efficient if we show more discipline as a board. So, I would suggest that we have a proposal from the superintendent to look at, if we can, I don't know if it's appropriate for a meeting topic or a work plan topic, but, you know, what the schedule looks like for the summer. I think the most important thing is to figure out what the schedule looks like for getting the strategic plan and work plan done by September, before school starts, and what the schedule looks like for tackling the facilities question. So, that's the, the long and the short of it. I mean, we veered into a substantive discussion from a discussion of meeting dates, but they are, as Mr. Castillo said, joined at the hip, and it's possible to set one without talking about the others, so.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Dr. Noonan, but where, I mean, you presented four meetings as we started our meeting, so do you think we can do all this in four meetings, or where, if you're in a position to respond, where, where are you at in terms of our portfolio of issues?
Yeah, I really actually see three things that, that need to be, well, four things that need to be done this summer, and I don't think all of them are inclusive in your work sessions or your regular meetings, but presumably, or presuming, or making the assumption that the bond referendum is on the ballot, you know, the big lift for us is going to be doing a capital campaign and getting out, out there and talking with people and, and, you know, being on the street and knocking on doors and handing out grip cards. So, I think that that's going to take up a lot of our time. So, I think that that's going to be an overarching thing that's going to kind of lay on top of us. I think the triennial plan is another big piece that we've got to get taken care of on July 7th. I have an administrative retreat with the administrative team, and one of the topics of conversation is the triennial plan. I, I'm not ready to suggest that we're going to rip and replace. I do think that there are some things in there that, that work really nicely, starting with the pillars of sort of how you've outlined what are the important pieces and components of it, but frankly, as I read it, it feels more like a work plan than a strategic plan. So, one of the things I'd like to do is engage the staff at some level around how do we become more strategic, and what does that look like? I don't know that it's necessarily going to functionally change what the document itself looks like, but it is an opening conversation for us on July 7th to begin the, begin that work. I would suspect that by July 18th, my hope is that we can bring you some semblance of a draft or an idea of where we're going with the triennial plan. That also happens to be the night that Dr. Cox is going to present the special ed report, so it's going to be a big, a big night for conversation. The, the third is the superintendent evaluation. I need to bring to you a working document that, for your review and acceptance for how I'm going to ultimately be evaluated. And then lastly, sort of the idea of this facilities master plan, and I certainly don't want to, I don't want to punt that, because I think it's important in the context of the conversation around the GM MEH discussion, but I, I just don't, I don't know if we have the resources necessary this summer to get that master plan done in a way that really makes some sense. What I'm going to present tonight as part of the conversation, or to share with you, as in board docs, is sort of what the thinking is about how we're going to, how we're going to maneuver over the next five years to seven years with respect to TJ and Mount Daniel, as Mary Ellen Henderson continues to grow and as George Mason is rebuilt. So, that will carry us for a while, but not for very long. So, I think it needs a much longer view than what I'll share tonight, but I don't know that I, that we as a staff can get that done in the summer. So, anyway, capital campaign, triennial plan, superintendent's evaluation are the big things for the summer, for me. And, and can I get it done in four meetings? Not, not knowing how the workflow and pattern is here, and I think it's ambitious, but I, but I think we can certainly give it a shot. I think the fact that you all meet in August is unusual. Most of your surrounding jurisdictional colleagues do not, they usually take off August, or at least one meeting in August. So, I think the fact that we have a couple of meetings to do some of this, or an extra meeting or two in August gives us a fighting chance. But if it comes to the 1st of August, and we get to that work session on the 15th, and we're not there, we have a Tuesday after that, we can have another work session, too. So, that's a possibility.
And this is the last thing I'll say about any of this. I would hope that when, when we have our retreat this summer, that we would invite all of the school board candidates to participate. I think that would be a helpful exercise in inculcating whatever our board becomes with a shared sense of values and understandings. So, I'm just throwing that out there, and if we can do other meetings with the candidates before then, I think that would be good as well, so that they're up to speed and can hit the ground running with respect to governance principles.
Something I do. Never seen that. To Mr. Castillo's point, I know the city council does something like that. They hold it at the Falls Church Episcopal, and the community is welcome to come and attend, and they bring in people from their other boards and commissions to be a part of the discussion. So, I, I think this idea is a good one.
Yeah, I think it's a great one. It's always good to have folks running to, to be on, on board, give them as many opportunities to kind of learn the major topics and essentially how we operate prior to joining, so they can hit the ground running versus they're getting pieced up after November, then they're kind of that really quick month of learning, as getting a cram, a big cram session of learning stuff, and then when you hit the ground in January, it's essentially you're, you're right in the heart of the budget season at that point. So, it is good, I think, to potentially give them a little bit more of an opportunity and, and learning time to kind of know the ropes, regardless of whoever ends up on the board. They know what's going on topic-wise. And with regard to the meeting schedule, I think it is ambitious to try to do four, and I think the summary is the time to make that effort, that if we ultimately recognize that we can't do it in four, at minimal, I would like to, to make the effort to try the three meetings, if, if after the summer, we recognize that we need that additional meeting, I think we can make that adjustment to do that. I recognize that it is ambitious, and I think, but I think possible, and as Mr. Castillo suggested, it definitely will take some, some discipline on all of our parts to, to when certain topics are coming up, and to get questions to the respective staff members in advance, so that we can continue the meeting, the flow of the meeting during regular meetings and/or work sessions, so that staff is prepared and/or have answered questions in advance, or have an idea of the questions that may be coming forward, so they can, they can be prepared, opposed to trying to answer on the fly. You know, definitely sometimes that's going to happen still, but to at least try to have them prepared and ready in advance of the meeting will help on the efficiency and moving the meetings forward as much as possible and, and time-wise. I think that's a big part of it, that we just have to be disciplined, and I think if we as a board buy into that and, and working with the staff and kind of giving them that advance kind of preparation time before meetings, I think we can at least make a, an effort this summer. Listening to Dr. Noonan just now, kind of listening, I actually am kind of a little, I don't know if the, at least right now, the two meetings, but I think going forward, at least making that effort, I think we should, but just recognizing the fact that we may have to add an additional Tuesday night meeting if, if we can't get everything taken care of. But it's good to hear that some work already on the triennial plan is already kind of in the works to start happening. So, any other comments before we move on?
Can I give you those dates now?
Yes, sir.
Since, maybe it's more appropriate to share them with you now. The planning commission is going to convene to consider the CIP amendment on July 3rd and on July 17th, and I'm hoping that we can get some representation at that meeting. I believe it's at seven o'clock or 7:30, but I can, I can verify. I can't be there on July 3rd, so if someone else or a couple of people could be there, it would be important, I think, to have some folks there. And then the city council has announced that they're going to have a special town hall meeting on July 18th. That's the night that we have Dr. Cox coming and is the first pass of the triennial plan. So, I'm going to work with the board chair and Mr. Rider to figure out how we're going to cover that.
Is that the only night that they have an opportunity to do that? It's kind of recognizing that Tuesday nights is a meeting night for us, that I'm surprised that they would make that effort to have that, something that's, that's going to directly, that we have a direct involvement with, that we're not necessarily, we're trying to figure out how we're going to be involved in it.
So, this is a town hall about the schools?
About, I guess, the setup for the referendum?
I believe it's about the referendum and
On a Tuesday night?
Yes.
When we're meeting.
Right, with a special presentation from a consultant.
Yes, so that's, if you hear it be, I'm like
Who skipped with this?
Not us.
I'm not sure if it was, I'm presuming that it was the city council.
Have we requested them to change the date?
So, let me, let me speak with Wyatt tomorrow and see what we can do.
Okay. Any other questions or anything?
Well, that was fun.
Getting things accomplished, getting things accomplished. All right, and next will be the GM MEH campus planning update. Dr. Noonan?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, my hope is that I can frame sort of an early conversation for you about some potential reductions that could bring the overall cost of the construction at George Mason down. At this time, I'm not, I'm not advising or advocating that we reduce the bond amount that's being requested at $120 million, which was passed last night as part of the CIP by the city council. However, I would like to sort of just generally gauge, I think, your interest in a number of possibilities that could support our work with the community going forward, as we begin to share the importance, first, of a new school, and our desires to help make this as affordable as possible while still, still serving the needs of our kids and our community at their, at the highest level. So, in the documents that you're going to find tonight, you're going to find a couple of things, and the first is a document that's untitled, but begins with a spread, not a spreadsheet, but a chart that has on the x-axis, potential savings, potential reduction, one option, one, two, three, and four, and five, and down the y-axis, access things like reusing existing furniture and some of those reductions. Behind that chart, there's a brief statement about each of these items. There's also a space on the front page for new ideas that you might have, and then a column that's blank on the front page called Option 5, and that'll be a place for you to kind of take notes and think about what would your interests be. So, everybody got that in front of them? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Mr. Enkuma, you good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so what I, what I'd like to do is describe each, each of these to you, each of these potential reductions to you as best I can, and ask you to sort of independently decide, yes, this is a good reduction, no, this is a bad reduction, or, in other words, to keep it or leave it. And then I want to just sort of open it up to some broader conversations about each of those one at a time, to see if there's questions, to see if there's consensus, and again, And again, this is a super high level, early conversation that we're having. But after having a good conversation with Perkins Eastman over the last couple of weeks, it really does feel like there are some spots that we can potentially consider that may end up saving some money down the line. My hope is that ultimately, when the bond does go to referendum and hopefully passes, that we will be able to say to the community, yes, this is the bonded amount. But we also are being really responsible on our side to say, you know, as we build this, we're really going to try to find as many places as we can to recapture some costs so that perhaps we won't have to bond that full $120 million. Does that make sense as a context and backdrop? Okay, all right. So, so the first is reusing existing furniture. And that ultimately becomes part of the F and E account, the furniture fixtures and equipment account. It would be considered a soft cost as opposed to a hard cost, signifying that as Perkins Eastman says it, you know, if you took a school, turned it upside down and shook it, everything that came out would be considered a soft cost. So the furniture would be reused. And Perkins Eastman has identified that the furniture costs are about $4 million. So we are, after our conversations, we're suggesting that there's possibility that we could reuse about a million dollars worth of furniture and potentially reduce that overall cost. And part of the, part of that algorithm also includes potential reduction of classrooms. So if we have less classrooms, which is another cost reduction possibility, we wouldn't need to buy as much furniture. There's an impact, obviously, to not buying brand new furniture. One is that we're using the old furniture. It might be not ergonomically correct. It may be a little bit more difficult for teachers to move around, less flexible in space planning. But what we could do is we could cull through what we have and repurpose what we can, up to a million dollars worth of furniture. So, so I'd invite you, as I'm talking about each of these, to write down, good idea, bad idea, here are some questions, whatever, in that, in that option five column. So that's the first one. The second one is a little bit more complex. When Perkins Eastman developed their conceptual drawing of what the new high school could look like, they based it on the education specs that, specifications that we as Falls Church City Schools gave to them to utilize. And as a consequence of that, from that ed spec, there were space assignments for classrooms. And the average classroom space, I think, is about 800 square feet. And with that decision, they were able to take the 1,500 number, the one, we're building the school for 1,500 kids, and determine how many classroom spaces they would need based on not only the number, but also the programs that we have in the school. So it'd be ESOL classrooms, special ed classrooms, general ed classrooms, music rooms, everything. And they determined that we would need 46 classrooms in the new building to accommodate the 1,500 students. That 1,500 would allow for us at a space utilization rate of about 80, actually, that's not true. Let me, let me get to that in just a second. So the 1,500 mark was how they built it. So when they built it at the 1,500, the classroom space utilization would be at about 85%, which indicates that when we get to 1,500 with those 46 classrooms, there's the potential that a classroom that's traditionally been used for five periods a day might be used for a sixth period during the day, not by the same teacher. So another teacher might flex in and flex out of a classroom. But that is with all 46 classrooms being built. When the schools opened, enrollment is expected to be at 1,200 students, right? So when the school does reach that 1,200 mark, potentially, when it opens, and as designed with the 46 classrooms, we'd be at about 71% space utilization rate. That is a very, very, as far as industry standard goes, that is a very low percentage of utilization of the space. It leads to a student yield by classroom of .038. So if you took the total number of classrooms, 46, and divided it by 1,200, you would get .038. The higher that number, the more space there is. Just remember that, that's the, that's the sequencing of the numbers. So the surrounding jurisdictions of Fairfax County Public Schools, Arlington Public Schools, Montgomery County Schools have an average yield of students of .027. So that means for every four students that they have in a classroom, we would have three students in that classroom. It's probably another way to think about it. So if we have a class of 20, their class is going to be that, that many more students. They're going to have about eight more students in that classroom. So if the decision were made to reduce the number of classroom spaces by 10, let's just say we went from 46 classrooms to 10, we could achieve new state, significant savings and a new student yield at 1,500 would be .024 students per classroom. So it's actually more constricted than what Fairfax County, Arlington County, and Montgomery County has. So it'd be less space per student than what the surrounding jurisdictions do. There is some room for movement in this number that could potentially retain more space if possible to meet the academic needs based on our ed specs that we provided. So if, so one of the suggestions that has come up in the conversation with Perkins Eastman is perhaps to reduce the classroom number to four, instead of 10, do it by four. So you could reduce by one English Language Arts, one Social Studies, one Mathematics, and one World Language Classroom. If we were to reduce by four, once we got to that 1,500 number, our classroom yield would be .31 students per classroom. That's still greater than the surrounding jurisdictions, still provides a little bit more space than those surrounding jurisdictions. And, and that in the end might be a good thing, a good thing for us. John?
.31 or .031?
.031, sorry, there's a zero missing in there. .031, thank you. So the impact of these reductions could, could indicate if we did all 10 classrooms, much less flexibility in the academic program. We're going to have, we have a growing number of ESOL students, we have a growing number of special education students. And that could be consequential down the line because those classroom spaces typically are smaller and oftentimes are taken from larger classrooms and split. So if we were to take all 10, we would lose, I, I believe, some flexibility. So an, an alternative solution would be to reduce it to four, and that savings would be about a million dollars. If we did a 10-room reduction, the, the savings is about $2.5 million. So there's a significant delta between 10 rooms and four rooms. But I do think in the long term, the long haul, if we're really building this building for 30 years, 30 to 50 years, I think 10 rooms is pretty ambitious. If you look at the years in 2030, 2031, we're getting into the 1350 range. And so if we go out beyond that, which I don't believe Walden Cooper has done, but if we got into the next 10 years, we would probably, thinking about that line of best fit, would be pretty close to 1,500. So about a million dollar reduction for four, 2.5 for 10. The next is, any, any questions about that one first? Let me pause. Yes, sir.
Does that include art spaces as well? Because you did mention like a few of the subjects, but does that also include art spaces?
It would not include performing or visual arts. So that's a good question.
So if you normalize our class sizes and our teacher loads, does the idea of smaller classes drive some of the differences between our division and neighboring ones? In a way that we could, we could go the direction of cutting a certain number of classrooms, but by implication, that would either mean larger class size or relocatables?
So a great question. Because our classroom space would still yield, even in that four classrooms with 1,500 kids, a .031 yield, that still puts us in the ballpark of that lower class size that you all have been trying to achieve.
And then I guess one other
That answer your question?
Yeah, and thank you. And I guess the other question is, you know, you can never be too rich, too thin, or, or have enough space and things like this. Because, you know, on the one end, you can be criticized for overbuilding, but on the other end, you can be criticized for underbuilding. And, and we certainly have taken hits on that before. You know, I, I could see having an approach whereby we say, we're not so sure how many spaces we need. Give us some options, including plans for, you know, if we're wrong, what would it look like? How could we add in some, you know, could we pre-build to stress the ceiling so it could become a floor for something so that we could add space to, to, to future-proof this to some extent? I would, I would feel more comfortable making a calculated risk like that if, if we have a plan B baked into the building.
Thank you for that. I, I think that that would be a, a conversation that we would have certainly on the front end, but absolutely when we got into the RFQ process and the RFP process, about what would the, what would that top level look like if we wanted to go up?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Reiner?
Do we want to talk about these individually or when we get to the end?
Maybe I'll go through all of them. Does that make sense? Okay, all right. So the next one is decreasing the performance department size. This specifically relates to things like the black box. Currently, the black box is designed to be 1,800 square feet. And by contrast, just as an example, Fairfax County has in their ed specifications, a 1,200 square foot black box. We potentially could reduce our black box from 1,800. Everybody know what a black box is? Okay, so a black box is a theater performance space, essentially. So it's a, it's a place where theater students meet and they, they put on, they work on their one acts, work on other things, and then can translate that onto the stage. So we could potentially reduce that to 1,200 square feet to realize some savings. Additionally, there are two, currently in the ed spec, two teacher workrooms. One is for visual arts and the other is for performing arts. What I've, what I've seen in other ed specs is that most of those departments have one single workroom. So what we could do is we could cut one of those workroom spaces. And then the performing arts space itself could be, and that's, and that is in the, excuse me, not the performing arts space, but in the, the auditorium, the theater, yeah. Could be reduced in size from 6,000 square feet to something smaller in the mezzanine. The overall reduction in that performing arts area represents, the overall arts program represents about a 2,500 square foot reduction. So, so I think that the big, the big takeaway here is that we could reduce the black box by 600. We could combine into one, and then the theater space could be reduced. The overall footprint of the theater wouldn't be reduced, but the space going up actually within the mezzanine would be reduced slightly. So there would be a smaller section potentially for seating. There would also be some limiting of flexibility. But one mitigating factor that was discussed with Perkins Eastman is in their current conceptual design. The way that they've set up the black box is the backside of it actually opens up and goes into the commons spaces. So remember the heart of the school, that black box was open, would open to the heart of the school so students could actually perform in the black box while students in that commons area were watching. So although it's reduced in size, it'd still be that feel or that look and feel of having something bigger. The next is the decrease in the auxiliary gym. The current design, oh, and by the way, the decrease in the performing arts space would be .7 million, so about 700,000. The decrease in the auxiliary gym space, based on the specifications, we currently have it drawn, they have it drawn at 9,000 square feet. Just by contrast, Fairfax County's auxiliary gym is 2,600 square, square feet. Arlington Public is 5,000 and Montgomery County is 6,000. So it's bigger than the largest of the other three by 3,000. There is some potential for reducing the space that would align to our neighboring jurisdictions to 5,000 square feet. It would create less flexibility within our space. But as the population grows, we still would have six teaching spaces at the high school because what we could end up putting in are the, the partition drapes that you've seen. So we'd have four teaching spaces in the main gym. We would have the auxiliary gym and two spaces separated by those dividing curtains. And currently, we have four PE teachers at George Mason High School. And in a school where I was principal not too long ago, we had 2,400 students and we had seven PE teachers. So even if we got to the 1,500 mark, the chances of us needing ever more than six teaching spaces would be unusual, I, I think, even considering our smaller class sizes. So, so there is some room, I think, in that auxiliary gym to consider. The space that was drawn, just by the way, was also keeping in mind community use. And there was a basketball court or a regular court with some seating on each side, some, some bleacher systems on each side. So by cutting it, it would reduce the amount of seating potential within that auxiliary gym. But it would bring us more into line with surrounding folks. A decrease in the athletics department size could achieve some savings. Oh, I keep forgetting this part. The decrease in the auxiliary gym would be a million dollar savings, just so I don't forget it this time. The decrease in the athletics department size would also be approximately a million dollars. And where we are looking is coming down in size on the teacher workrooms or the coaches' workroom, excuse me, from 1,200 square feet to something closer to what the teacher workrooms look like, which is 400 square feet. That would potentially create some issues because I, the way that those coaches' rooms are used are for, you know, there's many coaches on a football team looking at film, doing some things like that. So reducing that into 400 square feet would be smaller, but if we designed it appropriately, we might be able to accommodate that. Currently, there's two locker rooms at 6,000 square feet with a small number of students that we have at 1,500. Compared to these jurisdictions, we believe, other jurisdictions that are surrounding, we believe that those spaces could be reduced to 5,000 square feet and that that reduction wouldn't be felt for many, many years. It's unlikely that we would outgrow those. By contrast, our neighboring jurisdiction, Fairfax County Public Schools, for example, has two locker rooms that are 7,500 square feet, but those two locker rooms are actually split. So there's four locker rooms. One's a team locker room, one is for athletics, and the other is for regular PE. Ours would be combined at 6,000 for boys and, and girls. So there's potential for that, that reduction based on our numbers. The next is eliminating the geothermal system. And that is, we, we're working with Davis Construction and Perkins, Perkins Eastman. And some of us got a, a presentation by council of governments not too long ago, suggesting that the reduction of, of geothermal would actually be less than what Perkins Eastman has quoted, which they've quoted $1.5 million for geothermal. And council of governments did a presentation saying that really was about a $300,000 reduction. The difference is, without going into a whole lot of scientific detail, which I know not a lot about, is that the $300,000 geothermal system is purely geothermal. There's no hybrid system or hybrid parts to it. With the hybrid system, which Perkins Eastman has suggested that we consider, there are heating and cooling units that are supplemental to the geo, geothermal system for those really cold days or those really hot days. So, so one of the things that we could look at doing though is going completely geothermal and kind of bearing it through that really hot day or that really cold day and reducing the geothermal to $300,000. Or do the hybrid system at 1.5. I think eliminating the geothermal system is, is potentially a short-term solution, but in the long run would be better to keep because it ends up paying for itself in nine years with the operating costs at the building site. So good short-term win, but potentially a long-term cost.
So just a clarification question, not a deep discussion.
Yep.
So you're saying that totally eliminating geothermal and going to a normal gas, electric, oil, whatever, HVAC would save 1.5 million?
Yes, sir.
And if you went solely geothermal, that would save 300,000 or that would cut the?
It, it could potentially ca, it could potentially cost $300,000 as indicated by a COG presentation that we had recently. However, after talking with Davis, Andrea from Perkins Eastman had a conversation with Davis Construction, and they felt like even the solely geothermal was a little bit more than that. So I think to err on the side of caution, if we were looking at that as a potential solution, I would want to think of it in terms of about a half a million dollars for a solely geothermal. a solely geothermal system.
Okay.
So, we could potentially save a million dollars if we did only the geothermal and no hybridization. Does that make sense? Sort of?
I'm having trouble following the numbers, the way it's break up. But that's okay.
Okay. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let me just say this. It's a difference of saving 1.5 million or a difference of saving 1 million. Okay. The next, the deferral of athletic field improvements could achieve a savings of half a million dollars if we deferred athletic field improvements specifically on the baseball field. It looks like the baseball field is going to be a potential place for staging of equipment and materials. And if that happens, there's going to be some damage to the baseball field. So, one of the things we could do is we could make the decision just to reskin the infield, to put a new layer of dirt down, repair some of the sod, and continue to use the existing dugouts. And if we were to do that, we believe that that, instead of doing a full replacement of the field, that could potentially save us a half a million dollars. The next is the demolition of the old George Mason High School site. There, there are two schools of thought to be considered here. The first is that it's part of our GMP that we, we pay the 3.8 million dollars to have the building torn down and have all the dirt work done and the like. And then we charge a little bit more for the land that it sits on. Or we say to the developer, whoever purchase it, purchases it, you have to do the demolition and you have to do the dirt work and get the site prep done to build the, your development, whatever it's going to be. If we decided to, and then potentially sell the land for that much less commensurate to the cost of, of doing that demolition. If we were to pass that on to the contractor or the developer, we believe that we could find a reduction of 3.8 million dollars. There are some considerations to, to think about as you're making these decisions. One is delaying the demolition of the building could create some potential supervision issues for us, not, you know, having that building there and not being torn down. There could be some transportation issues if we don't do the right, you know, roads and curb and gutter that go through the property of the new site. If the, if the developer delayed demolition, and this would be a bigger issue for us, in communities drawing, the practice field sits on where the site of GM is now. So, we potentially could be out of a practice site until that demolition happened. Now, are there solutions to that? Of course. We can, we can work with Thomas Jefferson to see what the field use looks like for a year while, while that demolition's being done. Perhaps work with Community Use and Parks and Rec to see if we can take parts of the field for fall sports and in spring sports. But it does create some operational issues for us, but nothing that we can't, I think, overcome. So, the, those are all of the ideas. Now, let me tell you what they sort of mean in aggregate. If you were to do option one, which would be everything except passing on the demolition of the George Mason site, we potentially could save 6.7 million dollars roughly. Okay? If we looked at option two, and that would be a four-room reduction, by the way, four classroom reduction. If you looked at option two, we would do a four-room reduction, everything else on the list, and 3.8 million pass on to the developer to do the demolition. And that potentially could raise 10.5 million dollars in reductions for us. Option three is the, the most aggressive savings, and that would be approximately 13 million dollars. The difference is that instead of four-room reduction, we would do a 10-room reduction, which would realize us 2.5 million dollars versus the 1 million dollars. And the last option is option four, which does a four-room reduction and keeps the geothermal in. And that would get us to a 9 million dollar reduction. So, my hope is that as I was talking, which was for a very long time, I appreciate your patience, that perhaps you were thinking about some of these different options and maybe making some notes. And I would invite the board to begin having a conversation about where are you, where are you on these reductions? Where are you with respect to your values in terms of, do, do we want to reduce class, classrooms? Do we want to replace all of the furniture? Where are you with respect to your values in terms of geothermal and athletics and the like? And we are here to help answer some of your questions that you may have. So, chair.
Mr. Ankuma.
It's our deadline for giving your response.
Again, I think this is a really high-level conversation. I don't think it functionally changes the amount that we would bond for unless that was something that you all wanted to discuss as a board. I mean, we could, you could make the decision that in fairness and, or in, in the spirit of collaboration, for example, you want to go to the city council and say, "You know what? We think we really can realize 5 million dollars in savings. So, instead of bonding for 120, why don't we bond for 115?" I think there's a, there's a risk in doing that. And I think the risk is that if something gets delayed, the cost of construction could go up, there could be some, some red herring. So, it's a long way of saying, I, unless you want to change the bonded amount, I think we have a little bit of time to discuss this. I would want to have some resolution before we start our capital campaign so that we can really hit the streets and say, "We know we bonded for 120 million. Here are some things that we're thinking about reducing as part of our overall process that don't impact the instructional programming for your kids. So, even though we bonded for 120 million, we don't think that we're going to hit that mark." That's just a strategy thought.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Lawrence.
Couple of things. First, on the geothermal, I mean, you've got the asterisk that said, you know, pays it back in nine years, but I, I really do think you need to take that forward and make it clear that, I mean, this is not a savings, this is a cost. Unless we think our school's going to last nine years, I mean, ultimately, this is a cost, not a savings. On things like decreasing gym size, if you could find other numbers for us to use, because saying ours is 9,000 and, you know, Arlington is this and, you know, others are that, that doesn't tell me ours is necessarily too big. Do we know if theirs are right-sized or if it's just what they could afford to build at the time? So, I don't know if there's something else of, you know, per student square foot or something that would say whether or not our number might be right and theirs might be wrong or if theirs is right-sized. Because just saying ours is going to be bigger than theirs doesn't necessarily mean theirs is right. So, I don't know if there's another, you know, you don't have to answer now, but just if there's another metric because it's sort of, you know, if, if they're going to jump off the roof, would we?
I, I believe, is it okay if I respond?
Me, and I'll add to that. And my question was, in that regard, was right fit and for the Bull Run District that we're participating in, what are the, the normal gym sizes for, for what, who, the conference we participate in? I know right now where we are using in MEH is undersized, I believe.
Yes.
So, I, that's, would be more of my question for the actual gym itself. So, that's where at least, that's my one question for the main gym part of it, then I'll hang on until other questions.
Just, I, I don't think there's any of these reductions were to the main gym, so this was the auxiliary gym.
Yeah.
The problem with MEH is that it's the main gym.
Yeah. Actually, with the auxiliary gym, I'm actually okay with reducing that size.
Yeah.
One of, one of the things that I can do is, well, it's two things. The first is that the, the numbers that I gave by square footage actually come from their educational ed specifications. So, ostensibly, the belief is that that's their best fit for those programs based on what they know and their kids need. I don't know that that's an appropriate metric for what we need. So, perhaps looking at and doing a survey of the other Bull Run districts that have schools that are our size would be a better, better look. So, I can, I can do some comparisons there.
Right. Okay.
I have a question about the baseball field. You're finished?
You can work.
So, wait until Dr. Noon and finish.
Oh, I'm ready.
Okay.
No problem.
Maybe multitask there. So, the baseball field, it's going to be the staging area for the construction, right?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. And by this deferring field improvements, you're just referring to the baseball field, does that mean it's not going to be put back the way it was before the construction began?
It's a great question. It would be, it would be put back in its current condition. It just wouldn't be torn up, re-sodded, brand-new dugouts, brand-new bleachers, all of that. It would look no different than it looks today.
And is that across the board with all the other fields? There is going to be no improvement to, well, I know the football field has to be replaced, but the softball fields and...
The softball field would be moving, the tennis courts would be moving. So, so there, there would be new, new facilities in each of those.
So, everybody, every other sport would have new facilities except the baseball team?
Correct.
Okay. I, I don't agree with that, but I'm just saying, no, no, I know this is just, this is just theoretical, all this, and, and its potential, it's something to think about. So, I just, you know, I, I just, I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Good clarification.
Sorry, just one more thing. Sometimes word choice really matters. If you could figure out another way other than saying decrease athletic department size, it sounds like you're cutting people in the athletic department as opposed to spaces.
Oh, okay.
And I don't think that's what you're doing. You're just saying, "Give coaches less space."
Yep. Yep. We can...
Just because we have very active athletic boosters and very active liaisons to the athletic booster, so you just need to watch your back.
I'm not...
Gotcha.
And I, I did you, I, I'm guessing you did this, but did you, have you spoken with, like, the drama teachers about the, the black box itself and what their input was or...
I did not, but Perkins Eastman did.
They did.
As part of their, their conversation. I'll be honest, that I haven't vetted this, these decreases with, with a lot of people. I know that there's a lot of legwork that needs to be done ahead of, ahead of any of these decisions, but these, these conversations did go on through Perkins Eastman with those constituencies.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would echo what Ms. Ward said about the performance, you know, the performing arts department, socializing that with them as well as the athletics changes to see what's, what's feasible. I, I think a couple of these questions are finance, and I would, I would love to get some more finance input. You know, in terms of a payback period of, of nine years, I think some in the finance world would say, "That's not, that's kind of middling." But I, I think that would be good to hear from them. I, I think the demolition of the GM site is also in some respects a finance question. Is it better to borrow the money to demolish it and get more money for the land in whatever way we do it? Or is it better to not borrow that money and, and saddle the costs on, on the developer, understanding there are other factors too? So, I think there are a couple of finance issues thing, issues there. I think another interesting question, and I don't know the answer to it, is with respect to reduction of classes, classrooms or expansion options, does geothermal by not having as much equipment in certain places make expansion easier because you don't have rooftop units and whatnot? So, is there, is there an expandability concept, element to, to geothermal that we need to bake into, to that downstream inquiry? I think reusing existing furniture is awesome. So, that's one, that's one right off the boot that I would say is that there's, put a, put a coat of paint on it or whatever, but, but I'm, I'm all for that. And I think, so, so those are, those are my, my thoughts there.
Yeah, I, I agree with the furniture. I mean, that's something that can be purchased at a later date when we're more financially sound. But with, with the rooms, room reduction, you know, sometimes we could be penny wise and pound foolish, and I'm concerned about, you know, when we do need those extra rooms, what, what that cost would be to do an addition. I don't know if there's any way to determine that at this point, but, you know, that might be something, because 10 years from now, if we need those extra four rooms, I hope it's not 10, but if we need those extra four rooms, what, is that going to cost us more than a million dollars? And if so, how much more?
Yeah. I, I can, I can give you an example of a, of a 10-room addition is about, it's about $10 million. And so, if you're looking at a $10 million in today's costs at a 5% escalation over the next 10 years, it would be significantly more expensive. So, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying about being pound-wise penny foolish, but I, I, you know, just as we look at potential, that's why I put it in there.
I know. That's why I raised that question.
Mr. Ankuma.
Look, I'm going to go out there and ask the question, are we under the gun to, to cut back on this? Is this you trying to do this? Is this, are we getting any pressure to do this?
I think, I think on that front, yes. I think, not necessarily, I wouldn't go as far as saying pressure, but yes, I think on our side, as long as we're not affecting the overall education program, if there are ways that we can potentially, and I agree with Dr. Noon, I wouldn't necessarily at this point put the number that we're looking at for bonding, less than 120 million. But if there are ways that we can save a couple million dollars, I think it's, would be not only for the, the council, but I think towards the citizens, I think would look at, look favorably upon that as they go to the polls. They recognize, I think, they all recognize that we're going to, that there will be a tax increase to do this. But if we can look at and give them some options of things that we're willing to do that won't affect their students' education, I think they would be, look more favorably upon that. And I think having the conversation on the earlier side, and right now, it's, to me, it's just a conversation until we do the RFQ and, and kind of get a better sense of what we're actually going to be doing after the referendum. But I think it's at least to let folks know that we're at least thinking about it.
Okay.
For the possible ways.
If, if it's, if that's what we're doing, because committing to any of this for me right now, if my, if, if I was asked to make a decision today, it would be no. I wouldn't back any reduction because we always seem to come back to a certain number. And I would hate to, I'd rather we had a number, to your point, we'll go for the bonding or we'll at least try to get there and maybe try to get the savings during the process rather than try to cut our nose to spite our faces in an attempt to get the bond passed only to find that we need this money before. So, anyway, that's why I'm calling for...
I, I think this is a really good exercise to get us thinking. And, and it's, and it, it's, you know, it's like when we do the budget, what, what can we, what can we get rid of? What can we keep? And, and it, it does show that we're thoughtful and not just being, you know, we just want to spend money. We don't necessarily want to spend money if we don't have to. And I think this goes a long way in showing that.
Mr. Ryan.
So, thank you for the comprehensive presentation, Dr. Noon. A couple of, actually, a number of questions. The first one is, in the 120 million dollar figure that was presented, that presumed some degree of savings once you added all the soft costs together. I think you said it was like $6 million. Is that, does that mean you're assuming that we do some of these things or is that already, are these on top of that reduction?
These would be on top of that reduction. So, actually, we, when we looked at it, if we were to take all of these reductions, we could get the community school hard costs to right around 102 million and the soft costs at about 11 million. So, it'd bring us in at about 113,700.
Okay.
If we did, if we did all of this. So, that would be, so, so the answer to your question is, the 120 gets us everything. There, there are some reductions in there, but not many. These would be additional too.
No, but the, but you, that doesn't make sense. Sorry. At least I'm not understanding it. Because you said we'd be at, if we took all of the reductions, that we... that we would be at the, a total cost of what?
About 1, 113, but take out 1.5 from that, because geothermal's not in there. So if we took geothermal out, we'd be at 1, 115.
Well, that's a reduction of about 8 million, whereas the reduction is 13 million. So that says to me that we are assuming that we'll do some of these things on the 120 million.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I don't mean to be confusing. The 13 million reduction is with a 10 classrooms.
Okay.
What, this is with four classroom reduction.
Got it. Okay, now I understand.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, thank you. So, I'm gonna just sort of go through each of these quickly. For the reuse existing furniture, I'm gonna join the amen chorus, except for Mr. Ankuma, who doesn't want to take any reductions.
At this point.
I, I think we can live with old furniture for a while. I'm, I'm, one of the things I'm more cautious about is the reduced four or 10 classrooms. I, I'm, I'm as close to hard over, no on 10, as I can possibly, I think, be. Four, even four makes me a little nervous, because we're the fastest-growing school system. As Mr. Castillo said, we've got a history of underbuilding. And the, you know, the cost for expanding, as you pointed out, Dr. Noonan, in the future, is so great. And I, I think about the experience of Wakefield in Arlington, which was what, built 10, eight years ago? And now they're having to expand it already, because they've grown to 3,000 students, so it's not big enough anymore. And they've probably got the room to do it. If we give 10 acres for development, we got nowhere to go but up. And unless we pre-build for going up, we're not going to be able to do that. So, if we're even going to reduce four rooms, I think we need to look at, as Mr. Sharp, as well as Mr. Castillo suggested, what it would take to pre-stage the, or pre-build the building so that we could go up on them without significant additional cost. Might be something smart to do, anyway. I, I, I'm, I think contingent on further discussion, relatively comfortable with the, the next three decreases of the Performance Department and the two Athletics Department issues. Not because I want to cut programs, but because I think, you know, we've got to, the, the only guide we've really got to argue that we've got a, you know, a bronze or a silver school system as opposed to a gold-plated school system is the comparable schools that Perkins Eastman looked at. And so I think, I think we ought to look at places to reduce that will have a program consistent with what Arlington or Fairfax County does, unless we can really make the case that our program is just different. So, you know, if we've got, looking at our Performance Department, if, you know, 50% of our students are involved in drama, whereas 15% of Fairfax County's, and I don't have any idea what those numbers are, then we've got a strong case for a higher percentage, and I think we ought to, we ought to look at it from that perspective. The eliminate geothermal, I agree, it's, it is a financing cost, but I just, I think that's a total non-starter. I wanna, I, the last thing I want to do is cut things that we can't add in the future that will add operating cost. The geothermal-only idea is an interesting one. And I, you, I think I'd want to know a little bit more about what the, what are, what are the temperature variances going to be in that sort of system? But it would, you know, I, we, we obviously live in a city that wants to do green building. The more geothermal we get, the better. I know that's important to some on city council significantly. And, you know, if we, if we went geothermal only, as opposed to going all fossil fuels, then we, we might actually have a, a higher, easier to get a higher lead certification, because it'd be a, more of a net zero-type building. Defer athletic field improvements, something I'd not like to do, but, you know, if we had to have 500,000. The demolition of the old GM site, that, you know, I hadn't thought about before, you know, because it feels like an easy 3.8 million. My, taking what Mr. Castillo said about the financing question, I think, you know, it, when I've talked to people about this, everyone seems to think it's better to move the cost to the developer, because then your bonded amount is less, it affects your city's financial rating less, and, you know, the, the payment you get from the developer comes later. So it's better to not get the payment later and not bond now. But I hadn't actually thought about the fact that the practice field in community one sits on something that couldn't be used, and getting the access road built might be a problem. You know, I, one of the things I wonder is, if you defer the demolition, does that mean you, you can't actually build that practice field? And so, you, you know, you have to cut somewhere else, and it's in the practice field. And so you have to build the practice field later, which I think might be a, you know, if we're talking seven or eight years in the future, that might be more of an issue. So, that, I always liked that, now I'm not sure I like it. I just, you know, there's some more questions there. So that's kind of where, you know, I, I feel about all the things. I think there's easily some things that we could do there, even if it's not necessarily what the proposed reductions are right now. And I would like to see the notion of pre-building for future expansion, if necessary, included.
Okay. So I agree with what a lot of my colleagues have already said. I will, Francis, I think, I know that the comparison to other districts was very powerful to the city council members. That was, it made a big impact on them, seeing where, where we could possibly, where we are building bigger than our neighboring districts have. And I think they've really seen that as clear places that we can shave. I don't necessarily agree with that, because I don't want to build smaller. Again, to Margaret's point, I want to be penny wise and pound foolish. I don't want to build small and then build again in 10 years. And that's not a wise use of our money. I would absolutely reuse our existing furniture. I'm with everyone who says, reducing classroom size, well, to me, it makes a lot of sense to bring us in line with utilization that other districts have. I don't, we're facing a lot of pressure at Thomas Jefferson right now. We don't know if we're gonna need to move 5th grade someplace, if we're gonna have to shift 8th grade. And, you know, I don't know what we're gonna have to do, but a $1 million savings doesn't strike me as a great savings if it means we have to spend $10 million elsewhere. I'm less, I love the arts and the athletics department. I'm less concerned about cutting those down a little bit, just because it does bring us into parity with neighboring jurisdictions. I wouldn't eliminate geothermal. I think that's everyone else's point. That's, to me, it's a non-starter. And the demolition of the old GM site, I was with Phil, I thought, obviously, we're not going to pay for that. He'd totally pass on it to someone else. But then I wonder about what it's like to have an abandoned building right next to our school. So an abandoned building seems to me like kind of a security risk, having this big building sitting there until somebody decides to tear it down. And who's responsible for securing that site, maintaining that site, making sure that people aren't living in that site? That makes me a little, a little concerned. And then my overall question is, how many pennies on the tax rate does this cut really save? So if we can take the, if we can, let's say, use the $9 million number, if we can do that, how much does it really save us in the long term? What does that translate into taxpayer dollars?
I don't know the answer.
So it's like a quarter of a cent, and I'm like...
But I can...
I'm less, I'm less inclined to cut anything. But if it's a penny on the tax rate, that, that, that's meaningful to people.
I can find that out.
Okay.
And I've been remiss, but welcome, Mr. Holmes, to your first official meeting with us as the student representative. And hopefully, you've been taking copious notes. And I ask you if you have any questions or comments about these reductions as well.
About the reskinning the baseball field, does that also include the grass? Like, on the baseball field as well, and will we, will we be changing that at all?
That's a great question. The reskinning would happen, and then any grass that was torn up would be replaced, and repaired, repaired and replaced.
With the same type of grass, right?
Yeah, so if it's Bermuda, it would be Bermuda.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I just came in at the tail end of what Erin was saying. And I, I'd like to also comment on that demolition. I, it makes me really, really uncomfortable to have an abandoned building next to a high school, middle school. I just think we're asking for trouble. And I, I don't know how that's going to affect our deal with the developer. I think it might just end up being a wash. So, I mean, that, just, I just don't like the idea. I don't think it's good. But other than that, I'm done.
I, just for the record, want to say, mine's not a blanket, no reduction. Mine is more for, I want the money upfront, and let's try to get the savings as we progress. But I hate to go in asking for less, because it's a lot more difficult getting more when you need it. You know, so, anyway, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I'd rather have it upfront and, and make sure we, we can save something. But to go in with less and then come back and go, oops, you needed another 5 million, which is an act of conquest to get that.
This is a good start.
To Mr. Ankuma's point, the, the other thing that I think we'll be able to realize, and I, I'm not gonna, I'm not, not gonna suggest for a second that we're gonna value engineer this building by looking at, you know, cheaper materials. But I do think the way that this has been quoted is with some higher-end finishes. And I think we want to keep our finishes nice, but I don't know, for example, that we need terraza tile through the whole building, or we need, you know, the, the highest-end finishes in our restroom. So there may be some other savings that we can capture along the way that will, that will be helpful to, to our cause.
As I've looked through, for me, the reuse of existing furnitures in the brain, I think we should potentially look at opportunities to do that. For me, if we look at the classroom reduction, which I agree that, you know, we may not be the smartest thing, but it would be, I would only be comfortable if we were to look at it, if it were to be four. With both the performance, Performance Departments and with the oxygen, I think, looking at those reductions, as long as they've been, which sounds like you said, that Perkins Eastman has spoken with the respective departments, and they are generally okay with that, I think those are, are good areas to, to look at for reduction. With the Athletic Department's space decrease, I don't know if I would go as far as, as the, down to 400 square feet, but I think that's a good area to look at for a possible reduction as well. And I, as I asked you a second ago, with geothermal, I think some of the Arlington schools, when they were built, I think they may have gone all geothermal. So I think it would be good to, of asking and talking with some of the folks there to see how going all geothermal has been for them in the hot times that they're gonna be in school, as well as when it's cold. Generally, depending on what we have to do with the Athletic Field Improvement postponement, I would, if, I'm generally okay with that, as long as we repair what may have been damaged during staging and do some level of, of what's existing there, some cosmetic things to, to get. I get where Margaret's coming from a little bit with, with some of the other new facilities that may come with the Athletics Department. But I think if we can do some things to cosmetic for the, for the baseball stadium, it would be good, and with the thought and plan potentially down the road, doing a little bit more in the way of work there. And with the demolition, what Ms. Gill had discussed, I hadn't necessarily thought about it that way. But, yeah, I probably would have some concern with having an abandoned building next to us as well, because that would be additional cost that we just had talked about of securing that facility to make sure that potential homeless folks have been potentially moved in there as becoming a space for them. But then also that additional potential cost or additional patrolling by Securitas and those folks of making sure that that space is secure. So I would have some issues with that, but I would also look, talk with this more of a financing issue of just, is it that, something that we would make a huge dent in the overall, what we'd get for the land down the road? I don't know if it would be, but that's more of a finance question for me. But I think this is a great starting point to, of where we are of looking at potential ways to, to do some savings. But again, I want to repeat that I think we should, for the referendum purposes, do the full amount that has been discussed of the 120 million, and not necessarily go into it reducing now, because as we all know, with a project that I will not name, has had some issues along the way that has, we've had to go back and ask for additional funding for. And that's something I do not want to do with this project. I want to make sure that we, we bond enough money to do it. But if we have, if we find ways to, to do, have some savings, I think that's, I think overall, a good thing for the community to know that we're, we're making the effort to do that as well. But we definitely, I think, need to go into it and make sure that we are bonding enough money. And again, with looking at finishes too. No, we don't need the Taj Mahal of finishes using the, to go to Fairfax County Government Center terms from my, my days out there. But I think having, making sure that we use things that are not necessarily Taj Mahal, but, but good finishing that is gonna give us that, that 30- to 50-year time that we are, we're talking about this building to last.
So, just any other final comments before I turn it back over to Dr. Noonan?
So I think, I think what I heard was, on some of these, there was pretty clear consensus. Again, I'm not gonna poll the board, these are just sort of beginning conversations. But I do, I do want to say, while Perkins Eastman had the conversation with the Performance Departments and the PE and Athletic folks, I'm not sure that they talked with them about the potential reductions. So, I feel like I have an, an opportunity now and an obligation, based on the feedback that I heard tonight, to sort of dig in a little further with them. And so I'll do that. I'll also try to get some information about the geothermal around some questions that came up with respect to that. I'll also see what the possibilities are about a pre-build on the top floor to see what the possibilities would be if we needed to go up, what that would do. I'll ask Arlington about their geothermal, I'll find out what $9 million looks like on the tax rate, see about temperature variances and the like. So I'll take, I'll take these, that I felt like they're, at least with some consensus around, and dig a little deeper and continue sort of looking at what does it, what does it mean at a real meaningful level for our kids? Does that seem like a reasonable next step?
I think that's it.
Sounds good.
I'd just add, you, we're, we're coming from a good place in the sense that we could live with four or five degree variations. If it doesn't rain in the hallways, I think our students and teachers...
Can only go up from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. And we're gonna move on to business action and information. 7.01 Resolution 02-17 RFP, GM MEH site.
What you have is a proposed resolution for the board to look at. As you all may recall in the past, when you did another construction project, which shall remain nameless, there was a resolution that was passed by our, our board and sent over to the City Council. City Council at this point has now done first reading of the revised CIP and bond language. And they are asking that we adopt this resolution as our official request to move forward with the bonding for the high school. So, I don't know if you want to read it, how you'd like to proceed with this. I think everybody's probably had a chance to read it at this point. But we are looking for, we are looking for consensus and signature from everyone, if possible, on the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Are there any questions, comments about the proposed referendum language? Mr. Lawrence?
One question, when was this version posted? Because this is significantly different than what we had earlier. And it wasn't posted very long ago.
That, that is correct. We'll find out exactly what time it was posted. Not unfortunately, but perhaps 4:30 or so. And we apologize for the late posting. To, to be honest, we got some feedback from some board members asking some questions about some of the language that, quite frankly, was mirroring more closely the former resolution that was passed by the board that went with the Mount Daniel project. And for clarity, we really felt like we needed to go back and clean up some of that language. So, this wasn't... like we needed to go back and clean up some of that language. So this wasn't posted until 4:30.
There's no comments or questions? Mr. Lawrence?
And, and you all got this in an email from me earlier. I mean, my, my main question is, what is the city's plan to pay for this? I mean, we have gone through this now for three and a half years. Three and a half years ago, we came with, you know, $112 million, $112 million figure. And we went through, and through, and through, and we were told that was too expensive. Now it's 120. What's, what's changed? I mean, the city, have they changed their financial policies, their debt ratios, their paybacks? I mean, and, and like I told you all, what, what we're doing here is asking the city to borrow $120 million in violation of multiple policies. So I'm just trying to figure out, why would we do that? And our discussion, frankly, today has got me even more concerned. We're talking about, you know, taking off classrooms, and reducing this, and here. And I understand the idea of savings, but it feels like we don't know what we really want to build, and we have no idea how to pay for it. So I'm trying to figure out why we're trying to ram this through. And I've been involved, you know, from the planning commission days, trying to push a new high school. Nobody wants a new high school more than me. But I also don't want a referendum that gets rammed through, and either barely passes or fails, because we've only got one chance. So that's, my, my main concern here is, I don't think we're ready for this.
We're gonna start with Mr. Ankuma, and then to Mr. Castillo.
To, to Mr. Lawrence's point, I would say, what we're doing is asking for a new school. I don't think it's our job to worry about the numbers. Yes, we have to worry about the numbers. But we're not paid to make that decision. I think that is a city council decision. And they've run numbers, and they've come up with performers, or whatever, and smoothing the debt service curve, and all that. I think we leave that to them. I don't think there's anybody around this table, Deirdre, Dr. Nunnan, and any of us who can answer that question about how it's gonna get paid for. I think that is a city council question, not our question to answer. How's this to educate the kids? That's where I'm coming from. But at least, that's the way I see it. So, that would be my response to you.
I, I'd respond to Mr. Lawrence and Ms. Ankuma by saying that, you know, we, we, whatever we do, we have to do within the realm of, of the long-term sustainability of the city. So we, we, we do have to educate our children. But I, I do think we have to be mindful of the costs. And I think certainly going forward, we're going to have to exhort the bidders to be very clear-eyed about what our financial trade-offs are going to be. You know, with, with respect to Mr. Lawrence's point, I think, you know, what has changed? I think what's changed is we've done a lot of work, some of it cumulative, that makes the case for what we have, what we need, and, and what it will cost. I, I think at this point, we have about as much information as we're going to get. And I think we know the parameters. The Perkins Eastman work defines on a high level what we're looking at. And now it falls to us to say, here's, here's where it is. We've vetted it thoroughly. Here, here's what the business case is going to be. It will entail an upfront bond issue. And here is the development program that's going to partially offset some of those costs. So I think, you know, we, we have studied this about as thoroughly as we can. And, you know, I, I've heard from people in the community who have basically said, pursue this very course that we're looking at now, that, you know, if, if we wait till we have metaphysical certainty about every single aspect of this program, then it's not gonna get off the ground. We know at a high level what the all-in cost is going to be. There's a lot of finance input that's gone into how you finance at 30, 30-year bonds versus 20, what the income stream will be coming from the development, and when it will hit. And, and I think we make the case to the voters about what all of this information looks like. And we then work with them, and, and with any luck, we get their, their input on November 4th, is it? Of seven, okay. And so I, I think it's really, this is, if we're going to make this a reality, this is the next step in the process. And, you know, it is, we, we don't know exactly what we're getting yet, but we have a, we have a good sense of, of what it will look like on a, on a conceptual level. And what we need now is to have the wherewithal to make this happen. So, you know, I, I certainly would like to say, I know exactly this is what we're going to get when, and here's where the STEM labs will be, and here's where the main stairway will be. But I, I think in terms of the incremental approach here, this is, this is the next step that, that makes the most sense in keeping this process going. And, and it is within some daunting financial, you know, we, we have to thread the needle between getting what we need, and maintaining our city's financial viability. And that's gonna be a, a very challenging exercise. But, you know, the, the alternatives on either end are the end of the city as we know it. So I think we've finally got ourselves to a place where there's, there's consensus that this, this can be done. And now it's time to engage the community, and ask the voters for approval, to proceed on a course that will allow us to, to bring all the work that's gone into this to a successful end. So, so that's what I think has changed. It's not perfect. It will be a lot of work. There will be a lot of questions about what the financing looks like, and, and what the timetable for development is. But, but I think we have processes that are continuing that will, that will help get us to that point.
Yeah, no, I think on the school side, we have defined it as much as it can be humanly defined. I mean, talking about, you know, taking away some classrooms here and there, that's it. It's really the financing that I think we are not even close to being able to go out. You talk about a capital campaign. I mean, I've run, you know, multiple canvassing campaigns for, you know, for referendum, and for, you know, national races. You need to know what you're gonna go out and tell people. We don't know right now. I mean, what it comes down to isn't, do you want this school? Everybody wants the school. It comes down to, how are you gonna pay for the school? And the honest answer is, right now, we just don't know. We've got lots of scenarios, sure. We've got lots of possibilities, but people, you don't vote just for possibilities. So I understand we can't know for sure, but I, I think we know far too little right now to be able to go forward. And separately, you know, we've always talked about, oh, we're right next to UVA Virginia Tech, we're right next to Metro. This referendum language also defines us as not being able to spend any of this money on that. And I don't understand that. I mean, that, that alone is a good enough reason for me to vote against it, because it says, "in the city of Falls Church." So I, I don't think we know enough, certainly for me, to be able to vote in favor of this. At the very least, I would suggest that you change that language, so that we don't say we cannot spend it outside the city of Falls Church. So.
I hear your concern about not knowing exactly we're gonna pay for it. But that's, that's not our job, to figure out the financial that we're gonna pay for it.
No, it's our job to ask, though.
But I, but I'm confident that our colleagues will help us, will get this done, that they will, the city council will work with their finance people, they will have a plan, and that when we go up for a referendum, we go on our capital campaign, we will know what we're talking about. And I'm very comfortable and confident, they are, they're gonna use the next few months to really work that out. They want this to succeed as much as we do. They don't want to go out and have a failed referendum either. And I am, like I said, I'm very confident that they will work through the finances on their side, and get, come to a comfort level. The fact that they were willing to get this passed at first reading is, to me, feels, is great. I am really happy that they went forward with that. I know a lot of them are very uncomfortable as well. But they are taking a leap of faith, and I'm comfortable taking it with them. And knowing that we all live here, and none of us want this to fail, and none of us want to bankrupt the city. And we'll all work together to come up with a solution. And then when we go to referendum, we'll have a clear plan that we can tell the community about.
So, I, I think I agree with everything Mr. Castillo, and Ms. Ankuma, and Ms. Gill said. I agree, as Mr. Castillo laid out, there's no way to reach perfect certainty. And there are things that are outside our domain of responsibility, as Ms. Gill said, including how the financing is to be arranged. I think everybody recognizes that policies will need to be changed at the city level to be able to afford this. But that, I think, is outside our domain of responsibility. Our domain of responsibility is to educate the kids. And, you know, that doesn't mean going in and asking for a $200 million school or anything gold-plated, but it does mean, as we do annually with the budget, asking for what we think we need to be able to educate the kids. And you could have said we should have done this before, you could argue this should have been done 10 years ago. What we know right now is that we've got an aging building, where the maintenance costs are gonna escalate every year. And in addition to that, the safety of our kids is at active risk. You know, we keep hearing about smells in the building, and it's raining in the building, and who knows that there's gonna be a roof collapse one day. I am quite uncomfortable with waiting any longer to put the issue before the voters. I also think that, as we've seen lately, you know, we're, we're paying more if we go forward now than we would have if we'd gone forward two years ago, because construction costs are soaring. So each year that goes by, our kids are more at risk, we'll pay more, and we'll be less able to afford this outcome. Moreover, you know, the only, I think, existential issue for the city is, can we build a new school to educate our kids? Because if we can't afford an adequate facility for our high school, then there really is no reason for Falls Church to exist. We ought to be a part of Arlington, or Fairfax County, that has the commercial base to afford them, afford those sorts of facilities. So, you know, this is a defining issue for the city. Not, do we have a cold, cold-plated high school? But do we have adequate facilities to educate our children? And I think it's a, it's a moment for us to, you know, as Aaron said, you know, we gotta take the leap of faith with the city council. The voters may not approve it. In my opinion, the voters are then voting that the Falls Church not continue to be an independent jurisdiction. But I think we've got to put the issue before the voters, we've got to do the best we can to argue for it. And the time has really come, maybe come in past, but it's at least come where the intersection of kid safety, adequate facilities, and rising costs have put the issue, you know, now is the time to move, in my opinion.
I couldn't have said it better. Thank you. I, I agree. Like, we, we have, we can't sit on this any longer. This has been going on way too long. That building is well over its due date. It has expired. And, and it's putting children at risk. And we need to move forward. And I, I think city council, maybe the policy doesn't fit right now. That doesn't mean they're not going to do anything about that in the near future. And like Aaron said earlier, we, our job is to get, design a school, get a school built. Our job isn't to figure out the pay, payment part. So I, I just, I don't want to drag this out a minute longer. I want to proceed as is.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make on this?
Yeah, so just about the aging school, just a few weeks before the end of the school, there was a water fountain fire in the weightlifting room. And I think that was the point. Like, yes, there were some classrooms where stuff was falling out of the ceilings, but some kids didn't know. But I think that was the point where most of the kids kind of knew that the building was aging, because they've heard from their friends that, oh, in this classroom, like, for example, in Ms. Hood, in Ms. Sharm's room, you know, you have to break open the ceiling tiles and put a trash can under it, just to get the water, you know, somewhere, not on the floor. So I think many of the kids are starting to feel like, why am I here in the first place, if it's, you know, if it risks falling? So I think that, yeah, we need, that, like, we need adequate school play, like, school. But in the meantime, we also need to, you know, take more care of the building we have now.
Good point.
You know, comments where I make a couple? For me, I think, having sat in on several meetings with the city council as they've gone through this, I think there is, for the first time, I, we, we've all sat through this before, for the last, at least, three, three and a half years of doing this. And I think, for the first time in that period of time, that I think there is more in the way of consensus. Because I think we, with having, at the time, strategic links, I think, I think they, to some degree, overstayed a little longer than with that part of it. But I think they actually got us all in the room, broke us into smaller groups, that actually got us to a point of being able to talk this through. And then by bringing in Perkins Eastman in the most recent time, and actually seeing what could fit, and actually talking about how it could look, I think has gotten us to a point that we, three and a half years ago, just never were at. And I think by talking through it with outside folks, kind of helping us, guide us through, because when we did it ourselves, we just spun our wheels over and over again. And at the end of the day, I think what's different this time is that we were talking about a fictitious number, where actually outside experts came in and actually gave us a number that what we didn't have before. The council, I think, has, by going first reading, has given some level of commitment. They recognize that there is still work on their side to be done to, to make this affordable. I think what we, the exercise we went through tonight is at least a part on our side of recognizing that we still have work to be done on our side, to make sure that whatever the end product is gonna be, it's gonna fit our educational specs, of not being gold-plated, as was just stated tonight, but a school that is here for the next 30 to 50 years. I think we are, if we don't do this now, Falls Church is not what every person, almost every person, I won't say every person, almost every person who you talk to who moved to Falls Church moved here because of the schools. That, at this point, as I said last Tuesday night, for us to be an education city and known for that, no is not necessarily always a facility, it's about who's in there teaching our kids. But it comes a point in time where we have to look at our facilities are not at all adequate for doing what they should be doing, and where all the communities around us, who we look at as our peer institutions of, particularly Arlington, they have all, excluding Fairfax, have, almost every one of their schools has had a major renovation and/or a new facility built. And we've been, over the last decade or more, just talking about it. That if we had did this 10 years ago, we wouldn't be looking at potentially building a $120 million school. It could have been less at that point. But because we were afraid of the ultimate cost of it, we are where we are now. A building has, has overstayed its, its usefulness. I think we have a case that can be made for passage of the referendum, and it's up to us to make that case. It's up to us putting forward the information that needs to be put out there, as to why, why now and not waiting and kicking the can down the road. It's still work to be done, and, and no one's gonna sit here and say that there's not work to be done on both sides of us doing that, that look, as well as the, the city council doing their part of figuring out and making it work financially. Because we all have the same goal at the end of the day, of making sure that the city of Falls Church is here for the long haul. But I think if we continue to have a school that is in the condition that it, that it is, and whether we replace the school or not, taxes continue to get looked at and go up. whether we replace the school or not, taxes continue to get looked at and go up, people are going to ask that question, why am I paying this much in property taxes when I can go to Fairfax or Arlington and pay a heck of a lot less? And get, pretty biased here, pretty okay education going to those places, but I made the choice, annoyingly made the choice to go to Falls Church, and I'm spending more because I like what Falls Church offers my kid of smaller class sizes, the potential of getting to being more active and involved in their schools, of parents that are active and involved in the schools. I think we have a premium that we pay for, and I think folks walk into it knowing it. And I think if we go into this referendum with the right information, that we still have some of that work to be done before we go into the fall. But I think we have a good case to be made of why we need to do this upgrade of our facilities. Any final comments before I ask Ms. Goodell to Mr. Lawrence?
No, just, I don't want people to think I don't understand why we need a new school. I mean, that's been clear, and it's certainly something I've spent, God knows how much time on over the last four years, four and a half, five years. But I think it is our job to ask how it's going to get paid for. I mean, we are all citizens, so to say it's not our responsibility honestly is shirking our responsibility. We've seen the council for years say, this dollar figure, even a smaller dollar figure was too much. They've not changed their fiscal policies to make it affordable so that we could do things. And now suddenly, we're going to take a big leap of faith that they're going to do what they have not done for the last three and a half years. That's what I don't understand. So, yes, we need a new school. I want us to get a new school. I would just like to know that we're actually going to have a financial plan to play, to plan to pay for it. And that's where I just do not have any confidence that we've got that. Well, we don't have it right now. You all think, in the next three and a half, four months, we're suddenly going to get something that we haven't gotten in the last three and a half years. I hope I'm wrong. But got nothing to go on right now.
Mr. Castillo?
Just to elaborate a little on what Mr. Lawrence said, I mean, there are three things, there are three legs on this stool. There's the school program, there's the development program, and there's the financing aspect of it. We've done a lot of work on the school program. The development process is necessarily going to be lagging, and the finance is going to be, you know, finance enables us to buy houses that are worth sometimes several multiples of what we actually bring home for salary. And so finance is going to be, alchemy is the wrong word, but it's going to be the catalyst that's going to make this happen. I'm confident, based on the financial analysis that we've seen in the course of several aspects of this, where we can lay out the arc of how this is going to work. The school program is going to have to come first, there will be borrowing associated with that. There can be financing options kicking in at that point, plus there will be the development process, which, now that we're in a decoupled world, is going to come farther downstream. But I think we can lay out how these building blocks all fit together, and we're going to have to do that. Because I agree that if we can't explain each of the three legs of this stool, then the voters will not be supportive of this. So I think the case is ours to make. I think the pieces of that case are out there, and we have to start saying, okay, here's how financing does open up options that are going to make this possible. So, you know, I think it's just time to bring all those strands together. And, you know, with respect to policy, yes, it will not be consistent with existing policy. I think council is cognizant of that, and I think city manager has put a lot of thought into what that means, for what timeframe, and what the ultimate plan is for getting back into policy. And so I think those are elements that I'm confident that council and the city manager will be able to explain in further detail. You know, I do think it's going to be incumbent on everybody on the board to be able to explain the financing and development pieces of this, because, you know, we are not just board members, we're also citizens, and we're going to have to have the complete understanding of this. We won't be able to just say, we just deal with the school part, and beyond that, our remit doesn't go. So this is, more than anything, is a vision. We're going to have to put all this together in a way that is comprehensible. It can't look fantastic, but I think we have the pieces there, and I'm confident that if we continue to work closely with the finance advisors that we have, and with the professionals in general government, that we can make as good a case as we'll ever be able to make. So.
I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. I just like to clarify something. I didn't want my comments earlier about this, I didn't mean to disparage you, John. John has been a very strong proponent, since I've been on the school board, of a new school, and has worked very hard toward that end. I just wanted to point out, and I do understand your concern, I do, but I really don't think it's necessarily in our shoulders. And like, I think the majority of us agree that we put our confidence in city council, that they're going to do the right thing, and this has been a long time coming. And I think at this point, I'm not concerned about what they're going to do. I think they're going to follow through on this, because I think they know it's in the best interest of the city to build this new school. So that's what I was trying to point out before. Didn't mean to diss you.
I'm obviously the new guy. And one of the things, I could say that for a little bit longer. You know, one of the things that I vowed to you as a school board was that I come to you as a collaborative leader. And I think about collaboration and sort of these, and picking up on your three legs of a stool, you know, there are three pieces to collaboration. One is that there has to be interdependence, and I think about the relationship that the school board has with the city council. And I think that there's unescapable interdependence that you have, and you have to rely on each other, and they have to rely on you to do the work of the city. And I think that that piece alone shows great leadership. I don't think you can be a team without a goal. So interdependence around a common goal, and I think our common goal between the two entities is that we build this new high school. And the last is that there's mutual accountability. And I think by putting yourselves out there and by agreeing to move forward with this resolution is the third leg of this piece of collaboration. You have the interdependence, you have the common goal, and now there's a sense of mutual accountability. Then in order to get their work done, they have to rely on you to get your work done. And I think part of doing your work is not just signing off and moving this forward, but is also back-ending it with the collaborative process and skills necessary to work with the council to get this bond ultimately approved. And so when I think about what it is to be a team, those are the three pieces that I think are being part of a team. And I think you have a great opportunity tonight to, in the spirit of collaboration, in the spirit of teamwork, have a chance to really move forward to better support our program here in the school. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Just one more thing, I just want to make clear. Yes, I'm going to vote against this tonight, because I don't think we have any financial plan to pay for this thing, and that seriously concerns me. But in the next few months, I hope you can all come to me and make me buy you something alcoholic, sorry, probably shouldn't say that here, because I was proved wrong. And if we have a good plan, I will be out there beating the bushes. I mean, the fact that I would vote against this tonight isn't going to change the fact that if we get a good plan, that we can defend, that we can go out and actually sell, I'll sell it. Right now, we've got nothing, and that is what concerns me. So I just want to let you know that this is not me saying, I'm done, I'm walking away. This is me saying, you know, a cry that we've got to get something in the next few months that you're all hoping we're going to get, and I'm just more skeptical of. But if we get it, I will be out there. But we've got to get it. And the idea of, you know, mutual support and everything is wonderful, but I'm just, I just look at the last few years, and I'm skeptical, and more than a little cranky. But don't take my negative vote today, meaning I'm not going to be out helping if we get a good plan to pay for this thing. And I think you all know me well enough to know that I will be out there over on Rollins Drive, annoying people in their front yard and putting things on your door, Michael.
You're welcome.
I just want to make that clear. This is not me trying to walk away. It's just, I just can't vote for this right now.
All right. And with that, I will entertain a motion for the resolution.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board requests the Falls Church City Council to consider an improvement ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds to fund the cost for a George Mason High School project, and place the question of the issuance before the voters by referendum in the 2017 November election.
A second?
Second. All right.
We have, sorry, one question, and this is not something we need to do now, but just a discussion. I had mentioned earlier that in the language of the referendum, and I'm glad that we have a city council member here, one thing that did concern me is, talks about contracted debt to pay for costs, we're constructing, renovating, and whole or in part, high school, middle school, in the city of Falls Church. We should get, you know, Carroll and Wyatt to look at that, to make sure that does not mean we can only spend this bond in the city of Falls Church. I think that would be a mistake. I could understand where you might be able to read it and say, well, this is, you know, the schools are in the city of Falls Church, but we can't give up on Metro, we can't give up on Womata, we can't give up on, you know, VDOT with that little road, we can't give up on UVA Virginia Tech. I would just ask that somebody get, someone with a law degree, to say, does that limit us? And fix it if it does. We may not be able to, you know, use our land in Fairfax County with UVA Virginia Tech, but, you know, getting down to not wanting to go under $120 million, because that might limit us, I just think we should make sure this doesn't either.
I don't know about the language of the specific referendum. Mr. Lawrence may very well be right. I'm not sure that's material to our vote, simply because while it's attached, the referendum, or, sorry, the document that we are voting on tonight says, "A ordinance," not necessarily unchanged to the existing ordinance. And so I think, let me finish, let me finish. So I take what you said as, you know, that that ought to be conveyed, and I think, you know, at least one city council member has heard that, and that can go forward. But I think, I think we can vote on the resolution that we've got tonight. That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, yeah, no, you can definitely vote on it. I just wanted to, I had mentioned that earlier and never really explained myself, so I just wanted to make sure that I explained my worry, because that would be something bad.
All right. Ms. Goodell?
Ms. Rancuma?
Hi.
Mr. Castillo?
Hi.
Gill?
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Reitner?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Resolution.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments or anything before we adjourn? Yeah, I'm going to picture you sign off before leaving. And if not, we are adjourned, just stop by.